Special call to Sauk Village Board Meetings, Monday, July 8, 2024, 5:59 PM.
Nobody can get the message. Tell them it's a very good message. You gotta read between the gap. I don't want tears. Tears in this. I gotta look back on these days. Three of them have been going away. They know each other. They're sharing. But it's a case of... Don't be seen with me. You follow me, I don't follow you.
Okay, we're going to, uh... Start the committee of the whole league and this six, so six. Trustee Williams will head at the work for the evening. Well, that's gonna be all.
Trustee Coleman?
Here.
Trustee Johnny?
Here.
Trustee Carter?
Here.
Trustee Williams here.
Trustee Seth here.
And Trustee Mark here.
Uh, first, uh, presentation. Before we start, I'll ask that everybody who can't hear you there.
Do I have a gentleman here?
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Um... No, no, I'm gonna ask for... The presentation of ordinances and resolutions. I'm gonna ask our lawyer to please, um... Respond on the fact of ordinance establishing the office of inspector general. And also, well, just, we'll start with the first one, because I don't, I didn't see an ordinance for that. But, uh...
I'm not playing loud, I think.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Nice to meet everyone. My name is Kevin Sterk. I'm one of the new attorneys, Ansel Glink. Uh, some of you, if you noticed, I was here the last regular meeting a couple weeks ago. Um, so reviewing the agenda as far as the ordinance for the office of inspector general, um, if the, uh, the trustees, the trustees don't have the authority to create that position, to appoint that person, uh, who would be serving in that role, and to do so would essentially be an impermissible effort, uh, to inject yourselves into matters of administration, uh, which is, the mayor is the executive branch of the village. That's his role. Uh, the board's role would be to train us in the languages of leadership ordinance, uh, be a consultant to the mayor and approve whoever he decides to appoint.
I really do think you need a mic, because we gotta take this. And I'm using a phone to take, and I don't think I'm gonna get everything. So, really, I need just, I'm, I'm clear, speaker? I'm sorry. Clerk's not here and I...
I know.
Right, and we have to have, make sure it's all official. And then if you could just repeat what you said, because I know I didn't act at that.
Trustee. Okay, so just to, um, we'll just start from the top. Uh, my name's Kevin Sterk. I'm one of the attorneys with, uh, Ansel Glink, uh, corporate attorneys for the village. Uh, so it's addressing, uh, the mayor's request, this, the ordinance, uh, establishing the office of inspector general. Um, the trustees don't have the authority to, uh, to create that position and to appoint, uh, someone to that role. Uh, that is the, the mayor's role, um, as the, uh, executive branch of the village that, that falls solely under his purview. Um, for the trustees to do so, for the board to do so, uh, would be constitute an impermissible effort, uh, on their part to inject themselves into, uh, matters of the administration. Um, what the, uh, mayor can do is appoint that person. Um, and, uh, in doing so would be doing it with the, under the consultation and approval of the board of trustees. Um, so essentially, the mayor is the person who would appoint the au, the, the inspector general. Uh, I also have a question from reviewing the ordinance. Uh, there, I think it's, yeah, it's section five, paragraph eight. Uh, the ordinance is also going to impose a duty on the inspector general where they would serve as the primary IT consultant. Uh, so, um, and this ordinance wasn't drafted by, by my office. I know that, um, that neither, uh, Mr. Bolland nor I, um, or Mr. Bruman looked at it, uh, or drafted it. So, don't know if that, that is something, um, that the, the village would want if this position is created. Um, I don't, I don't know if somebody would really be qualified to, who could be qualified to serve such a role. I'm sure there's possibly a unicorn out there that exists that has that, those qualifications. Um, but that would also be something maybe to reconsider, uh, before we go diving into that. So that was my opinion as far as that ordinance goes.
Mayor?
You there?
Yes.
Yes. So, uh, just to, and I, I'm sorry, attorney, I apologize. Can you, can you tell me your name again?
Sure, Kevin.
Kevin, okay.
Sterk, S-T-E-R-K.
Okay, Kevin Sterk. Attorney Sterk. Okay, attorney, uh, thank you so much for your opinion. Uh, the board is looking to make this position a consultant position, so the person would, uh, come before the board, present their, their product, present their presentation, so that we can all hear it, including the audience. But this is a consultant, a contracted position, is what the board is looking to, uh, identify this position as. Not an appointee, not an employee, but a con, contracted consultant that will be, uh, contracted according to the terms of whether we do a year or two or whatever our agreement is, or whatever they want to present. But this is a contracted consultant position, not an employee position.
Okay. I, I, in the ordinance that's, uh, that isn't spelt out that way, um, it doesn't, it, it reads as if he is being, he or she would be appointed. Um, and their job would essentially, you know, even if they're being appointed as an, uh, independent contractor, um, and they're still falling under that purview of, again, it's the mayor's authority and his authority alone to, to do that.
So, uh, again, as a contracted consultant, that is a, a position that will, has to be approved by the board and consented and approved by the board. And as long as the board consent to it and approve to it, then they will become a contractor here. And at the same time, they will be able to, uh, address the board, the mayor, yourself, and anyone else that's involved, because that is what their position entails.
Okay, and again, my opinion is that it, uh, you know, is that the mayor has the sole authority to do that?
Well...
So, I don't wanna, I don't wanna continue talking in circles about it. I've given, respectfully, I've given my, my opinion on it and...
Respectfully, I do understand that, but again, respectfully, I wanted to make sure that that was corrected, that it's not an appointed position, that it is a consultant, contracted position. I just wanted to make sure that that was very clearly understood. Thank you.
Yes, trustee Seth?
Mrs. Sterk, uh, attorney Sterk, you also stated that that would be a unicorn for a person to be qualified to handle all those things. So what are you saying, basically, that no one is really qualified to do more than one thing? Could you clarify that?
That's certainly not what I'm saying. Saying that what you're, you're asking, what, what the ordinance is seeking to do is to have, uh, there, there is looking for a person who is going to have the qualifications of inspecting corruption, um, and then rendering, and rendering opinions of, as to their findings, um, but then also having a background, by that same token, of running an IT department. Um, I'm not familiar with any towns that, any municipalities that we represent where they have, uh, uh, an inspector general who serves that, who serves dual functions. And those are two very significant, you know, significant roles, I think we would all agree. Running the IT department and also inspecting corruption. Um, so that was, that, that, uh, what I was referring to as a unicorn is that I'm not aware of, you know, somebody really having those credentials.
Okay, so you're assuming that it's one department, one person doing all these things, when it's actually a staff of personnel that would handle different departments?
Okay. I, I'm just giving, I just gave you my opinion on it.
Do you have a question? Trustee Williams?
Welcome to Sauk Village. This is your first board meeting, okay? Through the years, we have been trying to find some kind of way to get fresh eyes on what's happening in Sauk Village. And we've been unsuccessful, because every time we attempt to bring somebody in from the outside to either investigate what's happening or to at least move us from where we are, which is our finance department has been stagnant for a couple of years. So every time we attempt to bring someone in, either on the financial side or to, to at least investigate and open up some books that we have in there, we're told that the mayor has the sole responsibility, which leads me to believe, why do we have six trustees up here? Because when we ask questions, we don't get answers. When we ask for invoices, we don't get them. When we send emails, we don't get responses. When we ask for financial information, we don't get it, okay? So if we can't as a board get this information, what we feel we need to do is we need to find somebody from the outside to be able to come in and help us get this information. So, Mr. Sterk, every time we come to your office for advice, we're told the mayor has the sole responsibility of doing everything in Sauk Village, and that's why we are where we are today. We haven't had an audit done since 2021. We're still waiting for the 2021 audit. It's been going on now for a year and a half. When I contacted the auditor today to see if there was any movement on that audit, he said not a single thing has been turned in in the past year and a half, sir. So if there hasn't been anything turned in on the 2021 audit, okay, that's, that's pretty egregious. So we really need to know what's going on in our finance department. So, if the board chose this tactic to try to bring somebody in from the outside, what choice do we have? What do you recommend as the village attorney? What choice do you have? What can we do to bring outside eyes into Sauk Village? Because what's happening right now, we're getting deeper and deeper down a rabbit hole. And as a trustee, I'm not comfortable with it, especially when I can't get information.
So, my advice would be that, um, first, having a, a public hearing and putting someone on the spot to try and come up with a solution for that, uh, probably wouldn't be the most productive route. Um, now, we have, there has been an exchange of dialogue. I know we're, we're very responsive, uh, to, to the board's questions, specifically to yours. Um, and, uh, and we would continue working in that capacity. Uh, I mean, but to have us out here for a special meeting to, to do that, to grill someone for that, um, I, I don't know that that's the most productive avenue to, to approach that.
I, I don't, I don't know. I, I'm having a hard time hearing, because I have a cold. But I think you said grill someone? To grill someone? What was your last statement?
I'd, that is, that, I mean, that is essentially how I feel. Like I'm being put on the spot to, to address an ordinance that I didn't draft. I didn't create. I gave my opinion on it, that the mayor has the sole authority to, to appoint someone to the position as it's, as it's outlined in the ordinance. Um, and I feel the most, you're asking for my opinion. I feel like the most productive way, and I agree with, with that, if, if it exists.
If it exists.
If it exists. Um, you know, there are other more productive means that we could go, that we could go about it. Um, and as I'd said, I feel that my office, particularly myself personally and Mr. Bolland, have been very responsive to, to questions and the, and the free flow of, um, of dialogue and ideas of how we can best do that.
Well, to an extent, sir, because one time when Mr. McGrath, um, the legislative attorney, and, uh, Mr. Bolland, the corporate attorney, were here, they both agreed that if, uh, the legislative attorney were to draft, um, an ordinance and pass it through Attorney Bolland, that that would suffice as, you didn't write it, but you reviewed it, and then you would have to give your ideas on it, uh, and give us your opinion on it. But again, my direct question to you, Mr. Sterk, is what are you directing the attorney, the trustees to do? Have a public hearing of what would we accomplish in a public hearing? How, how do you see, so invite the public to do what? What we're saying is we want your office or someone's office to come and investigate Sauk Village finances, because it's getting to the point where if we can't get information, we don't have bank wrecks or audits done from 2020. This is 2024. We haven't had a budget. Now, this is going on the second year. Maybe you're not aware of all this, Mr. Sterk, but as a trustee, I'm very concerned. And I'm speaking for myself. So however the trustees decide they're trying to bring outside people in to look at the finances, this is the way they chose to do it. Now, we had an internal auditor that was recommended by your firm, someone that Carrie Lynn recommended, and that person has not been able to get in and do her job, even though we passed an ordinance that was vetoed and overwritten. And she got like a very small amount of time to come in and, and perform her work. And then she got cut off. So the trustees are getting cut off, and the internal auditor's getting cut off. And every road we go to try to investigate the finances, we're getting a roadblock. So, sir, this might not be the way that you think it should be done, but saying that all falls on solely responsible, on the mayor, to appoint all these positions, what can a trustee do when it is our job to be responsible for the village's finances? What can we do?
Oh, I mean, I've, I've given my opinion on it. Trustee Williams? I've given you my opinion on it. Yes, trustee Seth?
So, the, the purpose of this office is to deter attack. And we need it in this village. So, why wouldn't the village want this particular office created? Why wouldn't you want to create a speaker?
Again, um, I, I can't speak to that. I, I certainly, as I'd said, I agree with you. You know, personally, I agree with you as far as that point goes. Um, but for the mechanics of, of how it goes, we go about doing it, um, the mayor would be the person who, who does it. And, uh, who, who points that person to that position.
So, are you suggesting that we amend this and send it to you and let you write it?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we'd be happy to, to work with Mr. McGrath in drafting an ordinance that comply, that's lawful, that complies with the law, and work with the board, and work with the mayor's office in doing so.
Mr. Mayor? And so, attorney Sterk, uh, like you said, again, thank you so much for your opinion. And so what we will do is to make sure that, since you're new on board, that you get a copy of this ordinance and you can read over it. But again, um, as with any position of a consultant, in a consulting category, uh, the trustees are putting a call out for an inspector general as a contracted consultant. And, and that is quite legal and within our boundaries to do so, to have that, uh, consultant to come before this board and present their product. And then us, as a board, will choose, uh, or decide and vote whether we want that product to be a part of this village or not. And that is the direction that the trustees will be taking.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions in regards to, even though the attorney just told you that you don't have the power to appoint? Uh, is there any more questions? You have a question?
Statement. Mr. Mayor, um, according to the agenda, we're not trying to appoint, but we just want to please the session of an IT.
The next agenda has on there to appoint?
Well, I'm just, I'm just referring to agenda number three.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, that's where we are.
But your next agenda that you signed off on has a motion to approve establishing your office. That'll be the next meeting. So I guess you're doing this meeting?
I'm, I'm only doing one meeting at a time.
I understand that.
And I'm only on one agenda at a time.
I just made the statement, but the lawyer just told, just said that it's not...
So, the third, so the agenda, shall we, shall we go on?
I'm just asking if any more questions? That's all. Um...
So, since we're asking for a presentation, are you having a... We're asking for a presentation.
Okay, but again, the lawyer just spoke that you cannot appoint this particular office at this time.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
So why would you have a presentation for something that you don't have any power to do?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
I was trying to ask her question.
I'm just asking, attorney.
I, I, I'll throw your hand. Okay, trustee Barry?
Yes. Okay, so, uh, again, the attorney did speak of appointment. We are not speaking of appointment. We are clearly speaking of a consultant, contracted position. So we are not dealing with an appointment that is not on this agenda. A consultant, contracted consultant is what we are dealing with on this evening. And we, also on the agenda is the opportunity for, uh, the consultant to speak and present their product, and that we can do. Uh, uh...
Why do you keep saying we can do? I mean...
That is something that...
No, but you keep saying that we can do.
That is something that we, as trustees, can do. We can listen to presentations.
So you think all the trustees...
Uh, we can listen to, I'm speaking as a board and as, uh... So we can listen to presentation. We can listen to presentations, and we're not dealing with appointing anyone. This is a presentation on this evening, and this, again, will be brought forth as a consultant position, which is directly involves the trustees. That is the direction that the trustees will be going, and we must go that direction, because we have asked our attorney, uh, Mr. Sterk, and Mr. Sterk doesn't have any clear direction for the board, so the board have a clear direction for itself. That will be to, to, to recommend to bring in office of inspector general as a contracted consultant. And this evening, we will hear from that, uh, that entity. Thank you.
Wait a minute, are you telling me we're gonna hear from you?
No, that's, that's on the, no, I said, that's on the agenda. I'm saying that's on...
No, you're saying you're telling me we're gonna do that.
I'm speaking of the agenda, sir. I'm speaking of, I'm speaking of, point of order! I'm speaking of the agenda, sir. I'm speaking of the agenda. I'm not speaking to you directly. I'm speaking of the agenda.
Oh, you're not speaking to me?
I'm speaking of the agenda.
Okay, you're not speaking to me. Don't worry about it, man.
We're speaking of the agenda. The item's on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, as I stated before, this, why should we have a presentation of something that cannot take place? So...
Why can it not take place?
Because you cannot appoint a position. You can, it's still the same thing, it's a position.
Why would you not want this position?
Well, I'm just, as a matter of fact, if I want it, it's a matter of fact that you don't have the power to do it. It's not a matter of where I want.
Excuse me.
Unless you wanna do something different, which everybody wants to be so magnanimous and go, okay, we're gonna follow the rules, that's not a rule.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
So, I'm talking now. I'm talking. You had your chance. You talked on the three times.
I just, I just wanted to make sure you saw my hand.
You had your chance.
Okay, that's fine, Mr. Mayor.
So, I'm just saying, so it doesn't make sense to have any presentation on something that cannot take place at this time. It cannot take place. So why we have a little discussion? Why you bringing a position in that you can't bring, because now that it was told that you can't do this, we're gonna try to do it that way? That's not how it goes. You're gonna, you're gonna bring in, last I saw the ordinance that you had, that this person's gonna hold three different positions. Now here, it's gonna be a company that's gonna hire other people to do other things. That's what I just heard just now. So, it seems... So, it seems to me that, you know, okay, I understand you tried to, on the last minute change things, okay, fine, but the lawyer just told you, you don't have the power to do that. It has to be through the mayor with the consent, as you guys already know. I'm hoping that I don't have to go any further than trying to run this meeting, but if I keep hearing going back and forth, I'm asking the people to leave. Trustee Williams, because we're gonna talk about this for the last half hour, one thing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Committee meetings are meant to have discussion, and this is a discussion item. The trustees who created this agenda specifically put the O I G presentation on the agenda so that we could have a discussion. How many people in the audience know the duties of the O, the I O G? Okay? Who knows? Oh, you do? Okay, I like you. When it comes to having a public conference...
No.
No, the point is... So, the point is, for the eight or 10 people that know everything, maybe we could just have some people that don't know what's going on? Let's clearly state the intention of the board and what it is we're trying to find out, because everybody's got their own preconceived notion of what is good and bad in Saw Village and what is being done and not being done. What I'm telling you as a trustee, what's not being done will hurt the residents of Saw Village, is hurting the residents of Saw Village.
You are hurting them.
Why can we not... Why am I being hurt? Why can we not have a person make a presentation? Again, the trustees attempt to do things, and we are told constantly, now we can't have our agenda, we can't have a presentation that we're asking for.
Yes, we can.
A person that we brought to the table. Why can we not have them make their presentation? I don't understand. What's the problem? This is a committee meeting.
Okay. To make it... Because we're going back and forth.
That's what committees are for.
First of all, trustee Burns, first of all, I'm trying my best not to interrupt you.
I'm not...
Okay, but please don't interrupt me. Thank you.
Well, it's the audience that is doing the...
Thank you, please.
It's not me, it's the audience.
No, that's you.
No, I'm not doing it.
Okay, anyway, what I will ask, since you so eloquently said that the board, I'm sorry, the residents don't know, then I'll ask whatever board member that's here, please explain what O I G and what the duties of an O I G is. Who wants to do that? Who wants to do that? Do you want to do that?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Do you want to explain? Do you want to explain what O I G is?
Mr. Mayor...
Do you want to explain?
I am not on... I, trustee Burns, is not on the agenda to explain anything. We have created an agenda, and we have a presentation that will go forth today. We have created an agenda for everyone in the audience to be explained by the presenter what their position is, what their structure is, and how they will benefit, and how that presenter will benefit this village. This will be a contracted consultant position. The presenter is here to explain exactly what their position is, and I'm sure everyone in this audience is eager to hear from the presenter. They don't want to hear from me, a trustee. I'm not in the position of an O I G. They don't want to hear from anyone but the presenter, and that is what we are here for tonight. That is what is on the agenda. And again, as you, Mayor, know, we must stick to the agenda items and not go outside of that. So I cannot speak, even if I wanted to, because I am not on the agenda.
Because that's the case why you're talking about it?
Because you asked me a question, so I'm answering. But I cannot speak about... I cannot be a presenter because I'm not on the agenda, Mayor.
First of all...
So I apologize for that. I wish I was, but I'm not.
As was stated, the position is not relevant at this point.
And as it was stated.
To ask someone to speak about it doesn't make sense.
Okay, so...
So, number one...
Are we gonna continue?
Are you gonna let me finish? Are you gonna let me finish? Are you going to let me finish?
You didn't say if you were done speaking to me. Me and you were having dialogue, and you didn't say if you were done with dialoguing with me. I thought you were continuing to dialogue with me. That's why I'm continuing to dialogue with you.
No, I'm not dialoguing.
Okay, because other than that, then we should get back to the agenda.
No, you're gonna... Don't tell me what to do.
I'm not telling you what to do, Mayor. I'm saying, we're here in a committee meeting to have a discussion, which is what we're doing, and we have to go from the agenda. When we don't use the agenda, we get off topic and we get off point.
I thought you wasn't talking.
But I am. You were dialoguing with me, so I'm dialoguing back, Mayor Burgess. This is the dialogue that you started with me.
You're not going to have any presentation for that.
So again, I... I motioned to appeal the mayor's decision.
What do you mean you motioned?
I motioned to appeal the mayor's decision and to have a presentation brought forth today that is on the agenda. I have a second.
I second.
Thank you. So, the presentation is on the agenda. Attorney, there's a proper motion and second on the floor.
Okay, so...
The mayor did also say if people continue to blurt out, that he may have them removed. Well, he can't talk because there's too much blurring.
No, you're talking.
You're talking.
You're talking, so he can't finish. No, the order will be the same thing you do. Don't tell me about the audience, because your audience is doing the same thing. So don't tell me that.
I don't have... We don't have an audience.
Don't tell me that, because you have audience too.
We don't have an audience.
Mr. Stirk, please.
Thank you.
No, I don't. No, I don't want to hear what you got to say.
Of course.
That's right.
Why don't you want to hear what we have to say?
Because the lawyer just told you, he just told you that that office does not exist, and he told you why. So you want to keep going further and further until what?
We're here for a presentation, sir.
Okay, no, we're not here... Why have a presentation of something that can't happen?
Yes, it can.
No, it cannot.
Why not?
I guess you weren't listening. You weren't listening to us. You weren't listening.
Yes, I was. The answer is whether or not you will approve it or not. So the question is, will you not approve this? That's the question. Will you not approve?
Attorney Stirk, do I call the roll on that?
That's the question, Mr. Mayor. I mean, it's possible, only if you approve it.
Okay, so if I can speak now on this. So there was, the mayor made his decision that there wouldn't be a... Essentially, that is his decision, that there would not be a presentation. Trustee Burns made a motion to appeal his decision, which was seconded, so now that motion is pending before the council.
I didn't ask for a motion.
I second.
The attorney Stirk just spoke, the proper decision.
Why are you talking?
We made an appeal.
I'm still talking, I'm still... Why are you talking? You don't need no interpretation. He doesn't need that. Why are you talking?
Well, because I'm the one...
Why are you talking?
Because, Mayor, you said you didn't make the motion. I'm trying to correct you to let you know that I'm the one that made the motion. You said you didn't make the motion, so I'm correcting to tell you that you know I am the one that made the motion.
Mr. Stirk, okay. I'm asking you, sir. They can make a motion and a second and vote on it, correct?
Correct, okay.
I didn't make the motion. I didn't even recognize it.
There was a motion in a second, attorney Stirk, to my call roll.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Carter?
No.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Seth?
Yes.
And trustee Burns?
Yes.
Okay, who is your person to bring the...
That's in the next item.
No, no, you said presentation. We weren't talking about the presentation. I want who's the person that's gonna be doing the presentation?
Yeah, but you're going along the agenda to pass it.
You're asking for the person to bring in the...
It's at item number four, Mayor. We're still ahead of the period. We need to follow the agenda, please.
And also, you said...
Point of order.
It says the ordinance is established, so you're not gonna...
Point of order. Point of order. Point of order. Point of order. I can't hear you, Burgess.
The very next time, I'm asking for a recess. I'm in a recess. I'm gonna have a recess. We'll be here all night, I don't care. Will you quit talking when I'm trying to talk?
I can't hear you.
What do you mean you can't hear me?
Because there's too much noise in the hall.
What do you mean you can't hear me?
I can't hear you.
Say it again.
I can't hear you.
Do it again.
I can't hear you.
Yeah, that's all it is. Popcorn is gonna be sold outside. Okay, the second item is municipal code concerning vendor payment. I guess that's gonna be also.
I'm sorry, Mayor, could you... I couldn't hear you. Could you repeat?
You couldn't hear me?
I could not. I'm asking you to repeat.
And ordinance, you got... Don't you have an agenda? You have to do it.
Mayor, I couldn't hear you.
You don't have a...
Mayor, please just repeat it, please.
No, no, I'm not...
Everyone did receive the...
No, I didn't receive that.
Everyone received that ordinance.
I didn't receive it.
It was delivered to your home, in everyone's home.
The ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't get the...
It was delivered.
No, it wasn't.
Mayor Burgess...
The ordinance was not delivered to my...
It was delivered...
This was delivered to my house.
O I G for the last meeting.
I'm not talking about O I G.
O I G and the vendor ordinance were both delivered to all the trustees.
What is vendor payment?
So the vendor payments are, as usual, we are...
First of all, who drew up that ordinance?
Pardon me?
Who drew the ordinance up?
An attorney.
Who attorney?
The village attorney.
Now you're being evasive now.
No.
Now you're setting issue up.
No, I'm not evasive.
Because I'm asking...
A village... I said a village attorney drew it up.
A village attorney.
Yes.
You don't know who drew it up?
I said a village attorney drew it up, Mayor.
I'm asking, what a village attorney drew it up?
The village attorney that drew it up is not present tonight, so I...
It was legislative attorney.
It was a village attorney.
It was a legislative attorney.
It was a village attorney. Mayor, it was a village attorney. This village has a corporate, two attorneys. Our village has two attorneys, and it was a village attorney. So I'm asking your question. It was a village attorney.
I want... No, because it didn't go before our...
Mayor, all the village attorneys received the documents.
It didn't go before our...
All the village attorneys...
Our office did not receive the ordinances that were drafted for this evening, and we did not prepare either of these ordinances. Respectfully, trustee Burns.
Right, respectfully is fine, thank you. But again, I didn't... I said a village attorney.
But that's not what I asked.
That is what you asked.
No, it's not. I asked you, what attorney?
I said a village attorney, Mayor Burgess. No, I'm not... Mr. Mayor Burgess.
Please explain what it is that's involved.
Okay, so what the vendor ordinance is, is just to make sure, we've been getting extra economical amount of bills, that we have not been able to verify the work product behind the money that the vendors are asking for. So it is in our ordinance, and we need to make sure that the vendors that are asking us for $80,000, 13, 14, 50,000, that they are... That they... Their request is accompanied by invoices. Now, again, we have asked for invoices. We have tried to get invoices, and we are not receiving them. It is the will of the trustees who's responsible for the finances of this village, that before we pay or prove, before we approve vendor payments, invoices must come before the trustees so that we can examine the invoices and examine what work they're actually applying in this village that they're asking us to pay for. Now, I don't know anyone in this room or any other room that if someone is doing work for you, that you would not want them to give you details on what the work they're doing is before you hand them over one single dollar. Now, since the trustees are responsible for the maintenance and the finances of this village, we think that it is legal statewide, per our code, that all vendors submit invoices and show the trustees what they are doing in this village to require us to pay what they're asking. Now, that is a reasonable request, and we have requested those invoices. So, the bottom line is this, if the vendors are not willing to comply, then that would delay their payments, and there's no need for a payment to be delayed if they comply. And there is no need for us to pay any bill, and we don't know what product or what you're doing for the money that you're asking and requesting. So again, you're requesting on our accounts payable large dollar amounts, but we don't know what work you're doing, and all we're asking is that you submit your invoice, that outline in detail your work. That's it. Nothing more and nothing less, and I don't think it's unreasonable, but if that is not done, then your payments will be delayed, not denied, but they will be delayed pending an invoice, and that is what this ordinance is about. Thank you.
Minute? Okay. Discussions and presentations. O I G, which I don't feel is... But if the board was listening to it, fine.
So, I would like to present Mr. John Howard to talk about the O I G position, the Office of Inspector General. Mr. Howard, would you please present yourself?
Thank you very much. Thank you, board, trustees, mayor.
John Howard?
Yes. We have history, council, and guests, everyone here. I would like to, as I observe the meetings, I've had people come here, observe the meetings, report back to me. I would love to see the board, and I think everyone would love to see the board, the entire board, the mayor, to work in a more cohesive manner. Would everyone like that? I can get everyone to agree on that, correct? Okay. And then, of course, there is some issues. I'm not gonna sit at the table, because I want to address everyone, and I want everyone, the board, if time is given, to ask me questions once I'm done. Yes, I'm a little long-winded, but I'll stick directly to the points. Office of Inspector General. There's... I'll bring up another town. There's another town near here, state here. They had similar issues. They set up an ordinance, created one for Office of Inspector General. It was not appointment by mayor, you can look this up, but for the trustees. And basically, the O I G is an investigator, okay? Investigates corruption, prevents overspending, and actually just a major force in any village. So with that, and I've heard some things about the I T department, and I'll get to that, because there seems to be a lot of back and forth on I T or a person that can handle both positions. I have a dual background. I spent many years as an investigator, as a chief investigator for a major law firm.[1704.02] I have been investigated for a fugitive task force. My information, I'm not afraid to share that, will be made public. I've worked with a secret clearance for the Department of Defense. I still have some clearances that I really can't talk about right now, but most of them have been investigative, getting to the truth. And I try to do it in a fair and balanced manner. And after observing the village for the last month, I think this village needs it. And I actually think that the village can work in a cohesive manner. In the past, I've met Mayor Burgess. We have a small history and he has eloquently wrote some things down about me, which I definitely appreciate that. Some very positive things, in writing, on my knowledge, skill, and education. And I know he remembers that from years ago. Also, I'm gonna pedal back a little bit. The attorney.
Attorney.
Attorney's attorney. I have a dual background. My background is both, I have an understanding of IT. I was an executive officer for the Financial Relations Board. I worked as, on the cybersecurity side for a nuclear site. So actually, I'm a nuclear plumber. So, worked on nuclear sites and investigated. So I have that dual background. Not saying that I would do both, but there would be a staff here and that staff is much more capable than I am to handle the IT side through a different department. It will be two professional individuals that work together in a cohesive manner with probably one training. So, as for the OIG, the OIG will be in the office where you would have twenty-four hour access. And the focus will not just be on specific investigations of specific trustees, the investigator will be for everyone and not just trustees on one side, the trustees over here. That's for everyone, for the mayor. It's also for your residents as well. And yes, I did drive around Sawt Village and I went to multiple neighborhoods, just observing some things. I have access also to major developers, major developers. And I'm talking about Richard Dreyfus, Dre House, from, the Dreyfus firm. Sillich, Joe Sillich, from the Morgan Stanley, he's the Vice President of Morgan Stanley. And I did talk to them. I said, hey, I will be here tonight, just giving a short presentation and going over some things that this village needs. I have worked in multiple villages as an investigator and as a department head for Homeland Security Emergency Management. And I'll get to that as well. Now, the OIG position is for OIG for investigating and it will be paired with Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. Now, I call it a two for one. I think this village needs both. And actually, an idea that we came up with was hiring from within the village. Village residents will be able to be trained to receive local, state, and federal certifications as well as licensing. The homeland security will be robust. This is something I set up in Dalton, okay? And I don't, and I'm gonna say something about that. We're not, I've seen many board meetings. Everyone's not gonna get along together unless you decide to work in a cohesive manner. Now, I'm sure we can all agree, and as I worked with that police chief, Chief Collins, he basically praised the program, it was very robust. Now, if you have a robust Homeland Security and Emergency Management here with the, say, OIG in charge of that, you'll be saving money and you'll be able to receive millions of dollars, there's just millions of dollars out there for homeland security programs. The county of Cook has, Cook County, I think in two thousand nineteen, sent two million dollars out to, I think, six suburban towns that have Homeland Security Emergency Management agencies. Sawt Village wasn't one of those villages because we don't have a robust or there's no robust emergency management here. But there's millions of dollars still sitting there that can come here and be put into the city coffers and used for different programs. Many different programs, for children, teens, schools, some of, some of the residents here may have children that's standing out at the bus stop, correct? And we can do Overwatch. But as for the IG's position, we have access to US Attorney's Office, State's Attorney's Office. I have connections there right now. I did want to invite the Honorable Judge Fairman here tonight with Paul Quinn from State's Attorney's Office, just to sit in and observe. But after, maybe they could do that in the future. But what I'm saying, what I'm talking about can be very beneficial to the entire village. Very beneficial. Bring money here, bring developments here. Don't you want that?
Yes.
I'm sure everyone wants it, correct? Oh, I will. I'm asking everyone. And you know what? I want to be fair and balanced. If one thing your mayor knows about me is that I'm fair and balanced, he's been able to talk to me in the past. Will have, you know, an issue with some other things. So, why I can get both sides together. Because that's what I need to do. I want to be able to get both sides together. I want to be able to get my investors in here and say, hey, you know what? It's stable, it's stable enough to bring major developments here. I'm not talking about small things, but major invest, major investments. Okay, so. And I do want to answer some questions. I want to answer the trustees' questions. I want to answer anyone's questions here. So I can, I don't want to be nebulous to anyone what I bring to the table. Okay, so, but I do have an understanding, again, counsel of technology and criminal justice, attorneys, you know, they're attorneys. And if you are working at a criminal law firm, you have an investigator that does the investigating. That's their responsibility, okay? And I've investigated more than I could probably remember and my credentials are listed. I can't even remember them. There's some things on the list I don't even remember. But, technology, I do understand, networks, understand virtual private networks, which are called VPNs, and cybersecurity. Had to do that for a nuclear site. And just imagine, would you want someone at a nuclear site? That has access to your control room, that knows nothing about those computers? You wouldn't want that, trust me. So, you have a question? You were raising your hand.
I was answering the resident's question.
Oh.
Taxpayer, and I said me.
Okay, so I will answer the taxpayers' questions. I will answer the trustees' questions about OIG, about DHS. There's different, there's a list. I have a list of different groups that I think that would be beneficial for the residents, not only just the residents, but every, just everyone here. You know, like I said, I talked about the Overwatch. The Overwatch unit would look out as a drone unit. Drone unit people or employees would be trained to get federal certifications, federal licensing, okay? And with that, we would be able to bill other municipalities, which is what they wanted to do in a couple of the municipalities. Not only the drone unit, you would have, I got a small list here, and that's called the Overwatch. Traffic Incident Unit. Traffic Incident Unit doesn't have to be confined to only Sawt Village. If we are the most technologically advanced DHS unit, we can draw people here. We can draw residents here because you have increase in public safety. And I would think that everyone would want to increase public safety here, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm gonna get to the question. I want to answer your questions. I want, you know.
You can't do those, but you have to address to the board.
Okay. I'm sorry, say that again.
You can't ask the audience questions, you have to address the board.
Okay, no problem. Good to see you again, too.
Okay.
Good to see you. I'm sure we'll be talking soon. Traffic Incident Unit. A search and rescue squad. Information Technology and Cybersecurity Unit. An intelligence unit. Auto prevention unit. That auto prevention unit is gonna prevent your vehicles from being stolen and broken into some of the neighborhoods. I did find out about that and I see you're laughing.
Yeah.
You know, you know what I'm talking about. I've already checked.
Yeah, you did a great job in Dalton.
Oh, no, Dalton, we'll just stick to, we'll stick to this.
District.
Yeah, we'll stick to Sawt Village right now. So, Domestic Abuse Unit. And you can have agents serving in multiple units. And like I said, some of those agents can be residents that can receive their training, their federal certifications, federal licensing, authorizations. And we can make Sawt Village look like, I want to see something more positive. I want to see major developments. If I'm involved in this village, I would like to see major developments here. So, I would love for Dre House and Sillich to seriously take a look. And they will do that with an email from me. So, are there any questions from the board? Yes, sir?
You're talking about bringing folks in. This is what we've been trying to do for a while.
Okay.
What can you do with American?
I'm sorry?
Can you? We've been trying to bring people in for a while.
Okay.
Okay, stores, anything to help the village. So what can you do with American, what he been trying to do?
Because I have those personal contacts. I personally know Joe Sillich, okay? I personally know Richard Dreyhouse. I know these people personal. And they were going to, and the mayor knows about this, they were going to invest into a point five million dollar project for me in University Park. But, again, we have to have cohesion. We have to work in a cohesive nature because they're not gonna just come here and go on me. They're gonna send people here and sit into, in the board meetings. They want to do that. The owner of Jimmy John's, I have access to him, I have access to the Gurkey family. I mean, we can work in a cohesive manner to get those business owners and those developers here. And they're not gonna do it if they feel like it's a risk. These are people that work on the market. So, and I hope I answered your question. So, it's just a matter of emails and meetings and coming out and seeing that everyone works in a cohesive manner. That's all. That's basically it. I would, I would love to see, I came here before. I would love to see a lot of things happen in Sawt Village, not just stores. And I'm not knocking a family dollar or anything like that. I would like to see other businesses prosper here. I would like other communities or people from other communities to come into this community, okay? And spend and be a part of it. I would like to see my contacts from WGN and CBS come out and say some positive things. Oh, we have positive developments going on. Oh, there's an IG there. But there has to be a level, an increase of public safety in Sawt Village. If there's an increase of public safety in Sawt Village, then you won't have, like, there are shops downtown. And I reach out to these people, hey, you had a break, they basically broke into your shop. Why would, and you're leaving? Okay, hey, why don't you come out here? It's safe in Sawt Village. They don't even steal cars anymore, okay? So, why would you want that? Why would you vote against that? Having economic development? I mean, you know, we've, we've talked about this before in the past. So, there was developments that I wanted to have done here. So, any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
So you're saying that you worked with Sawt Village before?
I worked with Sawt Village. There was someone here that was trying to work with Burgess and myself.
So did you have a contract with us?
Uh, not, no, not a contract. Excuse me, I probably need some water because I'm long-winded. But, that was someone else that your mayor is very aware of.
Now, speaking of you, have you worked for Sawt Village?
No, no, I've worked here.
What was your connection with Sawt Village?
Your EMA director asked me to help. Because I have access to technology that other emergency management agencies don't have access to.
Can you call what year that was, sir?
I'm sorry?
Can you call what year that was?
Wow, that was probably two thousand fifteen. Yep, that was, a long time ago. Two thousand fifteen.
And can you explain to me what happened in that situation? Whether you walked away?
Yeah, I had, you know, some, yes, I did walk away, some situations. Excuse me, I have to walk away if I don't see that, no one's gonna work in a cohesive manner with each other. And I just see constant fighting and then everything that I'm trying to, excuse me. Everything that I'm trying to introduce is not being, being accepted or done.
She's bringing some water.
So, if you are not, some people say they want progress, but they don't have the tools to do it.
So if there wasn't progress in two thousand fifteen and you stepped down, what made you come back to the village now, knowing that we're dysfunctional now? What?
I have, I have new investors. I want to make it, I want to make it work. I have new investors. There's a new investor team. Most of the investors I had dropped out. I've got new people. The Gurkeys, they're not gonna come back here. I've even reached out to them. They're like, no, doesn't matter if you're OIG, Howard, I don't care if you're mayor, I don't care what you are or not, Gurkey family's not coming back. Okay? Now, I have people that say they consider, and would consider coming back, then I'm gonna go ahead and move that, move that forward. Now, the people, Terry Beedle was one of the major investors. He's long, you know, rest his soul, he's not with us anymore anymore. He was a major player in the financial industry. He was covering Homeland. I had him here. He came and met, I believe he met Burgess as well, but he's no longer with us. And again, back then, I can get these people here, the new that wants to do something. They have money earning, that they want to invest. Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure I understand. In so many words, in so many words, you're saying that the key in some cases is to have an OIG, correct? Or what it is you do, right?
Yes.
It begins, I mean, you're saying development can begin.
Yes, it begins with public safety. There are shops that I visited, owners that don't want to, didn't want to leave downtown Chicago, didn't want to leave their community. Didn't want to go to other states to do their businesses. They wanted to be here. And I have access to those people. Because some things have been happening recently, been happening recently that wasn't happening in two thousand fifteen, trustee. Trustee Raven, it wasn't happening.
Johnson.
The Raven, trustee Raven Johnson. Yes, ma'am, trustee Raven Johnson. It wasn't happening ten years ago. So, there's a new set of people that are willing to do this. So, and some of the ideas that I, that I have would be absolutely outstanding.
I do have a question. Back when you were here, your whole resume is for, basically for investigations. I know when you were here, that was part of the things you were doing.
Yes.
I just wanted to know, where have you, what municipality or whatever have you gotten into the economic development aspect of it? As far as bringing businesses in? Because you said you could bring those businesses in. And I'm trying to figure out what it is that you can do that a lot of people haven't been able to do. That's the first one. And, well, I'm just, I'm just gonna ask that first one because everything that you have here has something to do with law enforcement. So, but now that you're talking about doing, bringing in development, which would be bringing the businesses, where did you cut your teeth at or what municipality have you brought businesses into?
No. I'm a trainer. Some of those people that I mentioned, I trained them, just as I trained you. You're a mayor of a south suburban town.
You got, you got me to give my concealed care, yeah?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Thank you for the positive feedback. And I've done the same thing for those people. These are Second Amendment loving people that we're talking about, okay? That are developers. So, that's how I met them. I still have access. I still have access to the ones that really wanna do something. Okay? I don't know what your access is to these folks, but mine is direct, okay? I don't know whoever you don't know, uh, whoever you know, why they didn't come here.
I'd like to ask you what municipality, what other municipalities have you brought commerce to?
University Park, uh, there were a couple of restaurants there, uh, that was one of them, okay? University Park was gonna get a huge development, like I said, a point five million dollar training center for the general public and. Now, and the developers were ready to go. And that was through Bola Delano and Mayor Covington, but Mayor Covington was the mayor. And she can confirm this. We had everything ready to go. Now, what developers and investors don't like is when you make a change. And they were already talking to Bola, and then they made a change. Bola Delano is not there anymore, that's polar risk. So, I'm not directly in their circle, but that's how they operate. That's how people that, that are on the market operate. That's how they do that. So. Hope answer.
It's just University Park, okay?
Oh, no, not University Park, uh, there's some ideas that were.
Not that some of what you brought.
I'm not gonna, I'm not going to go into exact detail.
No, no, I, I don't need to.
But I'm gonna get, uh, Oak Brook Terrace, okay? That's one. The other, Dalton, Illinois. And that's only because I was there.
So you brought.
The other municipality, Mark was a municipality as well.
You said Mark?
Yeah, Mark in Illinois. But if you're not doing things right, if people are not following some of, uh, the direction that they're supposed to, when they want me to come in and make improvements, this is not gonna happen. So, I just said one thing, one word, cohesiveness. Do you think it's possible for, can I ask a question to the trustees and the mayor? Do you think that all of you can work together in a cohesive manner?
Did you say you came to the meeting so you had somebody come to?
Yes, but I'm just asking that directly.
I mean, but you see.
Yeah, I've had people come here.
Okay.
But I just wanna know that, from, directly from you, do you think you can work together in a cohesive manner with your trustees?
It's four to two against me, so I mean, what's, what's together?
Well.
I mean, if I try, even the council chair has been held up because they wanted to. And that's paying bills.
Okay.
So that's their fiduciary, um, responsibility is to pay bills, but it was held up because of whatever. So, if you've been to the meetings or you saw the meetings or asked me to come, you would already know the answer to that question.
Yep, I know the answer.
I'm hoping that it could.
But I wasn't able.
We brought people, we brought people in here to try to bring commerce in, and it was voted down. It was voted down. They were gonna bring in some commerce here. And we got, we got a, um, presentation that you're presenting now, and then the next week was, was voted, was brought to be voted, was voted down, not to bring that trust for that.
Okay, now, knowing that, um, maybe the, these, the other trustees that you know, that you're working, well, trying to work with them, didn't know that we had history, okay? So, going forward, this is my question to you, going forward, what are you willing to do to go forward to work in a cohesive manner? What are you willing to do? That's for every. I'm sorry, just a minute.
You said, what am I willing to do?
Yeah, what, any, this is, if, anyone wants to ask you a question. What are you willing to do to go forward to work in a cohesive manner?
Trustee Seth? Mr. Howard, thank you for, um, appearing today.
Okay.
To answer your question, as a, I'm speaking for me.
Okay.
I'm very willing to work with the mayor and all of my other trustees. I have no issue with that. The whole purpose of this board is to work cohesively. Unfortunately, that has not occurred, but that doesn't mean it can't occur. So, at any point, the mayor can say, come into my office, let's have a discussion.
Okay.
At any point, and I'm agreeable to that, and I'm sure that some of the other trustees are as well. So, yes, we can become a cohesive building.
All right, fantastic.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Barry.
Thank you. Thank you again for coming in, and I am very impressed with your resume, um, in all areas. We have worked diligently with the mayor to try to bring in whatever we can to get development. We actually have Southland Development with us now, um, that came before this board, and we voted them in because they said that they would be on it to get development. Um, I did ask one of the main persons of Southland, what was the last development? As, as, uh, similar to what the mayor just asked you, what was your last development? Uh, the, what, the, the answer that I got was their last development was in nineteen seventy-one. So, Southland, we, again, have tried to get invoices and things of that nature. And we still have not gotten any type of report from the development company that we approved as a board. Because we truly wanna work with our mayor, and we truly want development to come to Saw Village. In addition to that, uh, we, we, there was a restorative justice community court, uh, voted in. Because our young people all over the Southland, from the ages of eighteen to twenty-six, we wanna make sure that we have, we, our, our village was the one that was chosen to have that community court put into our area so that these young people can be, uh, have restorative justice. We voted that in as well. And guess what? That community court is not here yet. So, and, and we've asked our mayor, what's the holdup? And our mayor tells us he doesn't know. Um, so we, we have voted in development companies, we've voted in restorative justice programs. Uh, we have voted in several, uh, we voted in, uh, uh, auditors, because we are four years behind on our audits. Now, we know that audits is what follows the money. And we are four years behind on our audits. We've had a couple of auditors to come in, but guess what? As of, uh, I believe earlier today, there's no action on our audits. The trustees have worked diligently, tirelessly, voting with our mayor to bring in development, auditors, programs, and it has all come to naught. So the trustees are willing and have been working with our mayor. I think that, I don't know if, if, if these, uh, persons or developers are qualified. I'm not sure what the problem is, but it's not on the trustees' end because we voted it in. So, we are more than willing to work with our mayor, and I can guarantee, we have worked with our mayor, and we still are. And that's why you're here.
Okay, uh, the OIG office, you would have access to my resources, my investigators.
Absolutely.
My legal analysts.
Yes.
My attorneys, and I have access to attorneys.
Yes.
Investigating for them. I have access to, of course, US Attorney's Office and the state's attorney's office, as I said, to investigate. I have financial people that can actually investigate and, uh, investigate with. We are investigators. Over the years, I've met some great professional people, uh, that wanna do good things. And if the village wants transparency, and they want someone to respond, uh, your OIG is gonna respond to that. There would be a twenty-four hour phone number set up for them to call. Uh, like I said, uh, there would be people that can come, call, email, so we can create, uh, service calls for them, so we can investigate. It doesn't matter if it's a trustee issue, or police issue, a staff issue, it could be investigated by your OIG. That, that's the job of your OIG. Now, that contributes to public safety, no corruption, and transparency. And if you want public safety to improve, you want transparency, those are things you're running, that's just true. I want you to help me. But I can't help unless I'm allowed to help by you. Are there any more questions before I conclude? Uh, trustee Williams? Trustee Williams?
Thank you. Problem is, there's so much animosity and hostility that for us to work together, it's not going to happen in that kind of way. That's why we, as a board, the majority of the board, has tried to bring outside people in with the qualifications and the experience to do what needs to be done. So, whoever first approached you to come to Saw Village this time, I am happy to hear that. I'm looking over your resume, as the clerk, I was here when you were working with the pass board, and yes, it was hostile at that time too. But the point of the matter is, until we open our eyes and our minds to be receptive to someone from outside the village come in and make it just a clear slate. You don't know this one, you don't know that one, you know nothing about what's going on, until you can actually go in there and see it, open the books and look at it. Right now, someone said we haven't had the audits for four years. We don't have bank recs done from two thousand and twenty. How do you go back and do a bank rec from two thousand and twenty? How do you get an audit done without a bank rec? I mean, we need financial expertise, okay? We need investigators that know what to look for and where to look for it. And apparently, we don't have that in-house. If we had it in-house, it would be happening. We wouldn't be where we are. So personally, you said, could we work together? I believe if we had, I'm not gonna use the word stranger, but if we had an outside person come in and do the work and bring the findings to the board cohesively. We wouldn't have to be asking questions. We wouldn't have to be, uh, sending emails to get questions and getting upset because we're not getting answers. We wouldn't have to be hounding the finance department for bank statements and, and, uh, 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 check registers and invoices. Because somebody who knew what they were doing would report to us and say, this is where Saw Village is right now. Yes, the trustees are responsible for the money, but we shouldn't have to ask the type of questions we're forced to ask and not get answers, which makes us wonder, what is going on behind those doors? It merely makes you wonder. So, the answer to your question is, I would love to sit here as a trustee and have someone sit there and be able to tell me intelligently, what's going on for the past four years and what we're gonna do to make it better.
Yes, that's, I like that very well spoken.
I just wanna say, I just wanna say one thing. I, well, two things. Number one, first one is, you say you watch the media, or you've had somebody that looked at the media. You already seen exactly, I mean, how could someone sit up here and say, we tried to work with the mayor, and it doesn't happen? You seen the, I don't, proof's in the pudding. You can't lie to the camera, number one. Number two, to sit and say, and point fingers, and say what somebody hasn't done, or they can't get in here because, you know, they wanna, a person wants to walk in at twelve o'clock in the afternoon and demand that they see what they wanna see instead of making an appointment. What's wrong with making an appointment? But you wonder, can they work together? Not when you have people that feel that they're entitled to do whatever. No one here is entitled to anything other than the truth. No one is entitled to say, I'm gonna do this unless it's for the betterment of the village. Okay, so if they come in and they want, uh, a trustee walks in and says, I want, I wanna see this right now, I need you to stop what you're doing in your department and give me what I want instead of making an appointment. You know, this is going on, and it has gone on for years, and you're asking, can we work together? I don't see it unless they wanna make a metamorphosis and they change. But right now, as, as things that are going on now, there's too many issues, because everyone wants to run the village. You have four people that wanna run the village, and they don't understand being a trustee and, 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 and being mayor are two different things. Now, there's an election coming? You wanna run for mayor? Please, put your hat in the ring and, and go for it. But to try to run and try to take care of day-to-day operations, then you don't even come here to see what they are. You wanna tell someone what to do on the phone, or in the chief seats, or whatever you wanna call it. This is not, and, and I'm not speaking something that, that's, that's foreign. The proof's in the pudding. I'm sure you've seen, as I stated before. But all of a sudden now, yeah, whoa, so, so what was me? We brought this in. The same person that said they brought in restorative justice was the same one that voted against it.
Amen.
Against the restorative justice, for whatever reason. But that's on record too. So I'm not speaking something that's not, that, that, that you can't find out. But now, all of a sudden, in front of you, everything, oh, I'll be having, okay, well, only thing I can say is, you know, it's good. HBO, Center Backs, Showtime. That's exactly what, what, what we have right now. But moving forward, as long as I'm gonna be mayor, we're gonna do the thing the right way. And then, and that's, and that's what it is. Call it what you wanna call it, saying that I'm trying to be a dictator. I was elected to do the right thing in the village, and I'm gonna continue to do that until I'm not elected anymore.
So. Okay, I wanna say just, uh, something, I just want everyone to listen. Just, just listen to this. Uh, don't make any comments. Just listen. We all know, uh, because it's been made public about Dalton, okay? When I was asked to come to Dalton, I was asked, again, as much as they fought, as much as they disagreed, when I presented some things to them, that was the only time that they voted across the board for me to come in here. Okay, that was the, this only time that I can read them, and it's on video, for me to come in and do what I can do for public safety, because they wanted more developments. So, it was unanimous. I had the, uh, support of the mayor, as well as all of the trustees, all of them. Because there was a possibility, if there's a possibility that it is. So, and I'm sure your residents want something different as well. I'm absolutely sure. So, I'm going to, if there are no further questions, I'm going to, are there any further questions? I am gonna end it on that note. And do take a look at the information, uh, my dual backgrounds. So I understand technology. Saw Village can be the most technologically advanced DHS EMA with a brilliant backing on the OIG side. We could have other municipalities come to here, paying for services, because they're not gonna have the tech that we have, or that I have access to, or we will have it first. I have some outstanding ideas that could work here. Just have to have the courage to, to say, yes, let's, let's do it. That way, the negativity that's out there about Saw and all of the, the hears, the hearsay, speculation can go away. It can actually go away. Are there any further questions? I'm, I'm not choking right now.
Okay. Thank you so very much.
Uh, thank you. Thank you to trustees, mayor, uh, clerk.
Isn't that here?
Counsel, and, uh, of course, uh, residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, and looking forward to working with you.
Mr. Mayor. I think we should, uh. Thank you, sir. Um, I think we should put it on the, on the agenda for approval.
I just told you about, or the lawyer just told you about this, right?
Yeah, but after hearing the presentation.
Again, the lawyer just said you don't have the.
Is this a, is this a special, wait, is this a special committee meeting?
It's a special committee meeting.
Do you have an agenda, sir?
This is a special committee meeting.
Well, I'll tell you, the copy machine was broken. I always had a special meeting.
And there's no paper either.
I don't know, I haven't used the copy machine.
When we come to work, we expect a copy machine to be working. Funny thing.
Yeah, well, it would work, but I didn't see any paper.
Yeah, they have a tendency to remove paper.
No, okay, but they're accusations and whatever you wanna call it, I, I don't know, I wasn't here today, so. I wasn't here today, so I'm not, I don't know what happened with the copy machine. I bet it's in working though, but I haven't been over it. So go ahead.
So counsel.
I just had, just the procedure of things and how we would go about this. So this is just a special committee meeting. They have presentations.
Yeah.
Like this. The board meeting itself.
Pops.
Right.
This is their board meeting that they call.
Right. So if they can have their, can have presentations to do that, there's nothing that could be, no vote, voting that would be taking place right now or in motion that would be going forward. That would take place very different.
I'm just, uh, ma'am. Ma'am, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, I wasn't move, I, I wasn't moving or making a motion. I just made an announcement or a, a statement that we should. Um, I made a request, okay, that we forward this to the board meeting.
This is, this is, this is, we're discussing a lot of Mr. Howard's presentation. When he, when he presented to, to the board, uh, speaking about investigating, a lot of that is external investigation.
Could you, could you...
Have our...
Come here, man.
He's getting you one, sir. He's putting my badges on.
I could borrow this for right now. A lot of the presentation involved duties that the, the police department has. Um, be bestowing police, police powers upon, if, if Mr. Howard was appointed by the mayor to serve their, their role of the inspector general. Um, a lot of what he was talking about would be outside the scope of the inspector general's powers and duties. Um, and, and in terms of bringing in business into the, into the community, which is all well and good, that's great. The inspector general, their job, wouldn't you be concerned about, uh, the appearance of like potential corruption then again by the inspector general trying to bring business development in? Um, so again, we're like, you're bestowing a lot of duties into that role. We're seeking to, i- if it goes through. Um, and, and the way that we're going about it right now is mechanically, that's not how we would, we would do this. It's, I don't think, again, anybody is disagreeing, anybody is saying, no, corruption is great. Let's go ahead and have that. Let's have more of it, please. Um, that isn't at all what, what, what we're, uh, that isn't the reason why I'm saying the way that, excuse me, that isn't the reason why I'm saying, uh, that we shouldn't have this. What I'm saying is the way that we're going about it is wrong, is unlawful and is incorrect. That's my voice.
All right, uh...
This is Sturrock, sir. So if we were to bring this ordinance to your office and ask you to review it and help to make it correct, would you be willing to do that?
More than happy to do it. That's why we're here.
Thank you. Um, what you've said is absolutely true. I think there was a whole lot woven into this one little ordinance, but, um, and I'm glad that trustee staff asked that question, which is basically what I was saying earlier. We want to work with the village attorneys, but we just don't seem to be getting the help that we need. So if, now that you know what our needs are and what we're looking for, I would like to see that you work with the legislative attorney and that we come up with, bring this back in the fashion that we need. Because I don't know who would be against having someone come in and do the things that we're looking to get done. Maybe not overall, four or five different things, yeah, that's overwhelming, that's not necessarily, what we're interested in, me personally, I'm not even going to say we, what I'm interested in is getting our finances back on track. And that's going to take some investigating. Nobody can come in here and apparently, we can't get it done in-house. We, we've tried too long. So what can we do? As far as the other things, economic development, now that we've hired an economic development company, we have a village administrator, we have other things. Yes, can we, will you work with us to get what we need done? But as far as the agendas, sir, you probably weren't given the agendas. And I understand the audience wasn't either.
Oh, I, I did, I did receive the agendas. The way that we, that the, the meeting has started tonight, it started off as we're doing a, it started off like a combined hybrid of a special meeting of the whole and then the special...
It's actually two separate meetings. One is a committee meeting where we discuss what they wanted to take action on. The second one was the action meeting. Okay, so we're still in the first meeting where we were discussing. Just so you, I didn't know if you had received agendas prior to this.
Right.
But we're not even in the action item meeting. This is the committee.
Yeah. So in, in terms of inspector general, uh, Mr. Howard brought up those village steer heads, uh, as the inspector general, has the Cook County Sheriff's Office serves in that role for free. They're not hired, they're not being engaged to do it.
Good information.
Yes. But was there a private assistant brought in to do that?
Good information.
Uh, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Attorney Sturrock, again, you're new here, so you probably don't know some of our background. But we've had $10,000 stolen, uh, cash money stolen from our, our vaults and, uh, have not been recovered. Uh, there's a $78,000 outstanding, um, supposedly theft that the mayor personally himself is investigating and we still have not gotten any, um, that, and we have not gotten. Well, we, and I'm saying that because we have, uh, our chief of police has not received any type of, uh, information for an investigation for 78,000. The state's attorney has not received any type of investigation for 78,000. The state's troopers or anyone else, the only person who has investigated the 78,000 has been our mayor personally. And again, that person had a surety bond, so they are more, we can put a lawsuit in and get the taxpayers their money back, but that again, has not happened. So I'm saying that to say this, there are many, as you spoke, there are state troopers, we have chief of police, we have a whole lot of investigative entities around this village, but there's no investigation happening. And there's, there's no, uh, no work being done in that respect. So again, the trustees, we are working tirelessly with our mayor on every hand to give our village what they need to get the products in this village, the development in these villages that it needs. And so since the internal investigation is not cooperating or not working properly, then it's the trustee's duty, fiduciary duty, to go outside and get what this village needs. And I know that, as you have said, um, who would not want this village and their children and their grandchildren to have the resources that it need, to have the development that it needs, to have all the things that a village needs? Now, I don't know what to say. I hear everything that everyone is saying, but I'm watching what's going on. And out of eight years of being a mayor, there is nothing in this village. Nothing in this village. Nothing. So again, the question was asked, we're going about this all wrong? No, we're not going about this wrong. We as trustees are going about this all right. If we can't get it done from the inside, then we must go outside and get the job done.
Okay, at this point, since you know you want to tell lies and pontificate, whatever you want to do.
Thank you very much, Attorney Sturrock.
Um, first of all, I do not, for the record, am in charge of the investigation.
I'm sorry, Mayor, that's what you told me. That's what you told the board.
I'm sorry. Are you, are you through talking? Be done. Thank you. Be done. Thank you. So I'm just making it, um, clear for the record, I am not in charge of the investigation. So moving on, um, that, that, that request to have this, whatever this inspector general position put on the agenda, um, as was stated before, we're not going to do that at this particular point.
I appeal the mayor's decision. I motion to appeal the mayor's decision to not allow this position to move forward.
You have not been recognized. You have not been recognized.
This is not the venue for that.
Oh, my goodness.
It's a special committee meeting of the whole.
Yes, sir.
And it's, it's not for this...
Well, I'm, so, well, sir, what do you, what do you mean? Can you explain it, Attorney Sturrock?
It's a, it's a real board meeting.
Okay, so what he's saying right now shouldn't be taking place in this meeting?
No.
Oh, what we're both saying, okay. I do apologize and thank you for that correction so much.
I just told you that.
He said, what we're, what we're both saying, the mayor and myself, so thank you so much, attorney.
Pardon me?
I said thanks to the attorney, Mayor Burgess, for correcting us both.
Right now, okay, um, the last, the next thing is, um, that.
Uh, the AIC discussion is, AIC from what I've learned on last, uh, last, um, committee meeting, is that they have been in our village, uh, before, working in our village since 2022.
No, they haven't.
That's what they, that was what they said. 2022 is what, on the board, please, please, someone, add me up. On the board. So AIC, uh, AIC...
No, they have not, no.
Uh, AIC said that they came to the village, first came to the village in November of 2022. They did a deep dive into our IT system. Uh, they spoke with AT&amp;T and there was a plan created. Now, that's what AIC said on last week. Those were their words, it's in the minutes. So, uh, in addition, I've gotten, uh, paperwork, uh, from AT&amp;T. And the, the presentation that was given to us by AIC on last week was not the presentation that AT&amp;T recommended for this village. Our village is not looking to have a PBS system. Our village is looking to have a tree system, whereas when you call into the village, you will be able to hit a prompt and that prompt would direct you to that department. That is what we discussed with AT&amp;T. It was much, much less. So this new thing that AIC brought before us, I don't know where it came from, but it was not the original plan. Also, we have, we have investigated the fact that there's a great, uh, conflict of interest with AIC being in this village. Now, we have found some information regarding AIC. And the conflict of interest is that AIC owns 4D Life as well as the ex-HR director is on that board. Matter of fact, they are the director of administration and human resources on the very board that AIC is on. Uh, Mr. Stephen Mack is also on that board. And it, and the, the, the former HR, uh, uh, director consultant is actually suing the village. And yet, that person is on the same board with AIC. In addition, the conflict of interest, the former HR consultant direct, I'm sorry, the director of finance consultant is also on the same board that AIC on. So you have a former director of finances that's suing the village, that's on the same board with the former HR director that's suing the village, that's on the same board that the former HR director owns this company along with their spouse.
Where is this?
Now, this was not, this was not revealed when we made the decision to vote this company in. We did what, it was not revealed, neither was it spoken. Now, I don't know, Mayor Burgess, I can ask you, did you know any of this?
I don't know of, uh, any, uh, any person you talk about owns AIC. You said that the finance, I mean, the human resources director owns AIC?
No, sir. I said...
Trustee Burns. Go ahead.
Thank you. And trustee Burns, I wanted to cut you, cut you short there with the, uh, because you did email our office today asking about the conflict of interest, whether it exists. And we, I looked into it. 4D Life is a nonprofit organization. Okay, so it's not a corporation, uh, like Jimmy John's or McDonald's or, or like Ansel Gwynn. Um, it is a nonprofit entity. Um, the, uh, AIC is not on the board. Now, Stephen Mack, who works for AIC, he serves on the board of directors for this nonprofit charity. Um, and, uh, as far as, uh, this, I believe Ms. Daniels, um, Sonia Daniels, right? Is that the other person who you're...
Douglas?
Ms. Douglas. Um, them serving on the board of directors doesn't pose a conflict of interest, uh, at, at all. Ms. Douglas is not a public official. Uh, she wasn't voted into office. She's a, a private person serving on the board for a charity with Mr. Mack. Um, a- as far as we know, there's no financial remuneration from the village that's given to 4D Life, um, and, and that there's any type of, excuse me, um, that there would be any conflict that exists, uh, for, for that. Um, and neither one of them are, is serving on the board of directors for a charity or receiving any type of financial remuneration for it. There's no benefit, uh, and there, there really is no misconduct. And I don't think that there really should be any type of, that, that any rational person would look at it, um, and, and think that there is even a hint of misconduct because two private people serve on the board of directors for a charity.
Okay, thank you so much. Now, I want to address that. Number one, there is a conflict of interest. This, uh, the former HR director, Ms. Sonia Douglas, who serves on that board, is suing this village. This, this former director is also, who has no contract with this village, does not work with this village, is not in an appointable position in this village. And your office and as well as the, uh, office of the legislative attorney suggested that it is very, it is, it, it hinges on dangerous and it hinges on the fact that our residents have our personal information that's still being out to a person who's no longer contracted consultant here, is not an employee here. The position of HR doesn't exist and neither does the department. But yet, that person is still trying to embezzle $80,000 from this village and from the residents of this village. Now, the bottom line is, she has no business in this village at all. Your, your, your law firm agrees and so does the legislative law firm. Now, the other thing is, she's also suing us. So is the other board member on the, uh, board of AIC suing us. So now, again, this was not disclosed when we had to vote for these people. And had that been disclosed, the outcome would have been much different, I'm quite sure. Now that this information has come before us, that two people that is on this, it doesn't matter what type of board it is, whether it's for profit or non-for-profit, these are two people that are suing this village. And one of them is trying to embezzle $80,000 from this village because she has no ties to this village in any shape, form or fashion. That is a conflict of interest to us and to the residents of the village of Saw Village. And as a trustee of this village, I know that that's a conflict of interest. And first of all, why would we work with people who is the leader of this non-for-profit organization who also is suing this village? And we don't want to have any, any dealings with people who are suing us and family members that are part of this. And then, in, in addition, just on this past Saturday, this very ex-HR human resource consultant was in this village along with Mr. Mack of AIC. What in the world is really going on in this village with these people that have no business in this village into our IT business? These are our residents, home, phone and all kind of personal information. This woman has no business here. And I think it's a grave conflict of interest for these people to be suing us and they're all on the same board together. So as our attorney, I'm not sure, you said someone that's reasonable? I am extremely reasonable. And I guarantee you, as an attorney, if this was your situation, you would want to look into this case as well. So this is a conflict of interest to us, for our village. I don't know how your village operate, but for this village, that is a conflict of interest. And we are very, very concerned. That is one of the reasons why we did bring in, uh, bring in, um, the presentation for the OIG. Because these are very unusual circumstances and it's the fiduciary duty again of the trustees to look into it. And that is what we are doing this evening.
Trustee, um, cock, I mean, Coleman, should you add to him?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attorney Sturrock, um...
Trustee, I mean, Coleman, should you add to the answer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attorney, sir, I believe you gave us your opinion as to whether or not it's a conflict of interest or not, correct?
Yes.
Okay, then, sir, we'd like to also have your, your opinion. Could you put it in writing and just give it to us?
Sure. I'd be happy to do that.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The proposal that AIC made a couple of weeks ago, actually June 17th, it said that AIC Technologies entered into a consulting agreement to provide an IT technology assessment on behalf of Sauk Village in November 2022. Not quite two years ago, but almost two years ago. And during this time, AIC delivered a cost benefit analysis in collaboration with AT&amp;T. AIC followed up with recommended upgrading the network equipment in January 2023. The results of our assessment and recommendations were given to the prior IT company that has proven to be inept in implementing the required network upgrades on behalf of Sauk Village. AIC was eventually requested for an RFP in 2024 and proceeded with a deep dive discovery of the network as no documentation was provided by the previous IT companies. A lot of, when people hear stuff like that, they take it as gospel, okay? The point of the matter is, AIC has been involved in our IT within the past couple of years. I am in possession of emails that show that AT&amp;T and the IT person both tried to get the village to move forward with implementation on things that deadlines were looming, that we were going to be in danger of losing our, a lot of our, our backup, our network. And it's okay to say that the prior IT company was inept, but the reason I like emails so much is you can't go back two years later and make it up. I've got documentation and I'm not afraid to share it with anybody. So, when somebody gives me that information, I could read this paragraph that AIC presented, but it does concern me that two people that are working, well, one's working when the board took action to alleviate, eliminate that position. Another one is also not working with Sauk Village anymore. And they are the ones that are now working with our IT people. And what really gets me is, we have information from four years ago that we need to try to make sense. And you're going to give somebody the keys to your IT department that could go in and do whatever they want to make the last four years make sense? So, do I trust, do I trust this? So, I'm just saying, whoever brought this up, I applaud you. I didn't know any about, anything about this. But the point of the matter is, you've got two people that are suing the village and they're responsible for your IT department. And then, the IT department says they've been here since November of 2022 and you knew our systems were failing. Why are we in the position that we're in right now where we have to force ourselves to get into another position? This is what you need to be asking yourself. This is what you, this is the position of the trustees. Who do you believe? Who do you believe? You can believe whoever you want, but I believe in the written word and I believe in the emails and everything.
Okay, I'm going to go to public comments. All questions and comments will be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on agenda items only. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak up to three minutes and may not engage in debate, comment, replies, and remarks. I will answer all questions once all public comments have been concluded. Please state your name when you come up. And we gotta get a microphone. I gotta get a microphone there.
Clerk Pro Temp, Ms. Williams, my name is Francine Anderson, and I'm ready to start whenever you're stacking for my three minutes.
Yes.
Okay, you're ready. Okay, thank you. First of all, I dare you guys to sit here and lie, 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 and double and triple lie. You just sit here and read exactly what the man presented to you at the meeting, because I was here and I heard it with my own ears. And then, you sit here and you sit here and she sit here and you ask the same questions repetitively every darn time they have a presentation, so you don't be listening. And no, it's not a conflict of interest for somebody to be on a non-for-profit. And you worried about them coming here with our IT? Yeah, it's a problem with our IT, you know why? Because the people that was in your seats then voted for somebody else to do the work. Yes, they did a presentation. They told you exactly what they did in November of 22. So, you sit here today and act like you didn't hear it. I sat over there and I heard it. Just like you got the gentleman coming for the OIG. Yes, OIG is investigated. Do we need investigations? Probably. You know what? Mainly on the trustees. Because I think all of y'all need some financial investigations as well as some psychological investigations. Because all this repetitive questioning, all this stuff you bring to the table, so you're going to tell me that you're going to bring in an OIG to bring in the kind of services that each and every one of the four of you voted no to when other presenters came? We have had people to come in here and gave you presentations for economic development. We've had people to come in here to give you presentations that was going to bring other opportunities and other programs. Yes, you had, we had to have a authoritative justice come and had to repeat themselves four different times before you guys would vote to bring them in. Now, you sit there, bring out your chest and say, oh, yeah, we voted for it because we got it. Don't lie to the people because we getting tired of being lied to. And anything else you want to hear from me? I'll be sitting right there, you can ask at any time you get ready. And anyway, you don't have law degrees. And I wish you would ask your legislative lawyer to give you more information. And since we're going to ask for invoices, can you please have him put the initials of the trustees that he's talking to on his invoices, so the next time I fore you them, it won't just say I talked to one trustee, I talked to two trustees, I talked to three trustees. Oh, since you don't have to stop talking, then I don't have to stop talking. Because we can wait, you can like, it's a way to do everything. So, I guess I can talk a little longer since you just don't time me out anyway.
Excuse me.
She hates to close me.
Let's see.
A tiny stir.
Uh, excuse me. Clerk Pro Temp, am I done?
I am keeping the time. I'm keeping the time.
Well, you should have talked.
I'm keeping the time.
You should not be talking to me. The information should come from the, from the citizen.
To ask me a question, I'm recording the meeting on my phone. I can't keep time and record the meeting at the same time. And I asked the trustee to do it for me.
I asked you, Madam clerk, was my time done?
How's it, ma'am?
Thank you. You know the position, you did it for eight years.
I am relinquishing keeping the time to Trustee Burns, so I can record the meeting.
Okay, she doesn't have to be.
You warned me of that, ma'am, but you are the clerk and you were the clerk.
First of all.
Yes, I was.
First of all, first of all, all she had to do was say time.
I did.
You said fifteen times.
That's because she kept talking. Because she was, she was past her time there.
No, she knew that.
No, she, Mayor Burgess.
No, don't Mayor Burgess.
Mayor Burgess.
Don't Mayor Burgess.
Time.
I'm asking, you know something? I'm not, I'm doing this. I'm asking for a motion to recess. I have a motion to recess.
Some moves.
And moved by Trustee, John, John second by Trustee Connor. All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to recess in ten minutes until we have the next. I'm not going to.
Well, we do have a time cap, so if you say time, you're suspended.
Don't hold up, I'm going to get you. There's two over there already. You gotta wait.
I'm not involved.
Oh, I'm not getting stuck out?
I'm, I'm not involved.
I don't know. Over here?
Yes.
Can you cover my water?
That's not.
She gave her water out.
That's okay. You know, we, I, I, we have, we have.
That's okay. She, she, yeah, I can't, I can't, I can't walk, I can't walk, ma'am.
Okay, all I have to say is, you're a master of money, that's marriage. I'm married also, or younger.
Well.
I'm married also. 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 I said, yeah, question. I'm a drum. So. Yeah, that's. I'm. 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 You like. Very. Part of. You. For. I'm. 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 Very. I'm. 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 I used to build. I'm. 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 So. Trustee. Okay. That's. We think. I want to. So. You got. Final. Okay, we're gonna call the committee, special committee meeting back to order. Madam, um, clerk trustee, would you please call the robe?
Yes, trustee Erbs.
Here.
Trustee Carter.
Here.
Trustee Jackson.
Here.
Trustee Seth.
Here.
Trustee Williams here.
Okay, we're going to continue with the, um, public comment. Anyone? Oh, okay. Wait, uh, three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor said Ronnie. We sit up here today and we listen to the things that they say. Uh, trustee Williams spoke about the budget, the audit, not being due. Trustee Burns spoke about paperwork that has to be completed, turned in, before any finances can go out. So I'm just curious, we had a resident that provided a service here to the village. And all the documents was in, but she was denied fifty dollars, fifty dollars. She was denied that fifty dollars. Now, if I'm wrong, please forgive me, but the board, the trustees, three of the trustees, four of the trustees voted to return a hundred and fifty dollars back to trustee Williams for an event that didn't have anything to do with South Village. If I'm correct, it was a church's event, something about the church. And if they use one of the rooms, I'm gathering her church paid for that, for that, for that senior center, or whatever room they use, I'm gathering her church paid for that. So why was she entitled to a hundred and fifty dollars? And the four trustees voted to return to give her that hundred and fifty dollars? Now, was paperwork turned in for that hundred and fifty dollars? Was the Ts crossed and the As dotted? Because remember that, that's what we said. All paperwork gotta be turned in, if it's not, if it's not proper, you ain't getting nothing. But trustee Williams got a hundred and fifty dollars that they voted, voted for. So tell me if something is wrong with this system or not. But I'll say this, though, trustee Burns, trustee Seth, trustee Coleman, look, y'all free. Y'all free. You ain't got no shackles on you no more. You ain't got nobody to tell you what you can think and what you can do. You got a man of your own, why don't you use it? A main thing, you don't understand what's even happening to you. Y'all have no clue what's going on with you all, none whatsoever, what you be leading by. Who's leading you? And why are they leading you? And you refuse to acknowledge it, you refuse to take responsibility for yourself. But then, some things is not understanding. Some people don't know how to be a leader, they may act like a leader, but some people don't know how to be a leader. And followers are one of the greatest things, I guess, in this world, because we got showed, got some trustees that are nothing but followers, that is not a leader at all. And keep talking about this village and they drained this village.
Time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You may start.
Larry said, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to, uh, make a comment, because the gentleman, uh, Mr. Howard spoke about, he spoke about cohesiveness. And, uh, we surely need cohesiveness. However, cohesiveness is attached to trust and transparency and those other two we don't have. I don't see a problem with having an investigation, because there is suspicion of corruption, and that's because we don't have bank reconciliation, we don't have a budget, we don't have an audit, we know for a fact that money has been stolen, and there's also allegations of other funds being missing. So that creates suspicion of corruption. I don't know why nobody else sees that. An investigation will put the rest on both sides. People think the mayor is a crook, maybe he's not. The investigation will surely prove that he's not, and then we can all join forces and work behind him to get the things done that we need to be done. And if there is corruption, we can root out whoever it is or whatever it is, so that we can resolve those issues and get the village back on track. We stand up here and talk about a hundred and fifty dollars when we got a million, two million that we can't even account for. But nobody's asking questions about that money, important thing is that the trustees who don't have control of the money, but at the same time are responsible for the finances. We need to find out what's going on in our finance department, and I don't think that's an unreasonable ask. Let's straighten it out.
You may begin.
Good evening, Mayor, Board, Steve LaRocque.
I'm s- I'm. I'm sorry, you have to stop for one second. Um, I want to make sure, are the, are we, is everyone still saying whether they are resident of the village or not?
No, just saying their name.
Okay.
No, I'm not a resident.
Oh, you're not a resident?
No, I don't care, how about that? Restart my time, please.
Your time is restarted, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Steve LaRocque. Attorney Stirk, uh, alluded to the free resources of, uh, Tom Dart's office in the Cook County Police. They will come out and do an investigation upon request for free. Why do we want to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars for this gentleman and his staff to come out here? Or is it just that you fraudulent, poor trustees think you can keep wasting taxpayers' money? Illinois State Police also has a special investigations unit, and I encourage all of you to look this up, because I did, because I know. I mean, you all blow me away with your vast knowledge of information technology and, uh, accounting, and, well, apparently law, since you seem to think you know more than the attorney. However, the special investigations unit of the Illinois State Police realizes that Illinois residents have a right to be represented by public officials without corruption and dereliction. Because of this centuries-old unwavering spirit, it's only fitting that Illinois State Police is the agency responsible for investigating allegations of malfeasance, criminal wrongdoing, and misappropriation of government funds. The Illinois State Police has statewide jurisdiction over these matters and can take complaints on their website by filling out an online form.
Time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say a few words, three minutes, correct?
Yes, you may start.
Okay, uh, Tilly Park, Merrill's Park, Crestwood, Oak Forests, they all have police departments. Those police departments are augmented by their DHS, EMA, they're all augment. They have law enforcement departments, but they still need augmentation, and the DHS EM augments those departments. I am not a financial, uh, you, you have someone that's will bring businesses here that would be part of my duties as OG, or IG, OIG, that wouldn't be part of my duties. Uh, my duties would be to investigate and use every resource I have to do it properly. I've already have contacts, Illinois State Police, and how many minutes do I have? And if you know how they operate, as I do, to get cooperatives, and it's gonna take more than an email, it's gonna take a process that I'm aware of, because I served as an IG before. So I understand how it works, it, it all looks great on, uh, the internet and, uh, basically these phone numbers, but you're gonna have a department that responds. Many suburbs municipalities have inspector generals that work with the state, that work with the state police, that work with the US Attorney's Office, because that's who they're gonna wanna speak to, that investigator. One minute? Okay.
Nope, we don't do that.
So, uh, I just wanted to clear that up, I don't wanna be nebulous about saying I'm the economic development person. I am not. My main duties will be to investigate, use every resource that I have, and I have a lot of them. Okay, I, I know so much more that's going on in this village than the average person, because it's reported to me, because I'm interested in this village. So I'll leave you all with that to think about. Okay? Thank you.
David Smith, resident. Number one, I heard a lot of terms floated around tonight, fiduciary duty. A fiduciary duty is a legal obligation to act in the best interest of another party. It's you guys' job, so you say, to act, act in the best interest of the village. Acting in the best interest of the village is listening to our paid attorneys. Not to overlook every time they say something that you don't like, or that you don't agree with. That's why he went to law school, to get a legal degree, something that no one up there has. That's your fiduciary duty, we pay him for a reason. It's interesting, the gentleman just said, people report things to him in South Village. Who are these people? Where is this information coming from? If it's not coming from official sources, it's all speculation. Now, as far as the invoices, again, let's make sure that the trustees' attorneys are filling them out right, because you guys, your attorneys will be the first ones to be delayed paying, because they're not filling out their invoices right either. I heard trustee Williams saying, we haven't had a budget in over two years. Again, where does the money come to pay for this gentleman? Doesn't make any sense. And you're gonna pay him and the whole staff, and then we're working on an appropriations budget? That doesn't make any sense at all, we're just wasting money. Maybe you don't care because it's not your money. The majority may not pay taxes, but I do and I care. Doesn't make any sense. The IT department, they were brought in to consult with the former IT department in the past. The former IT department didn't take the baton that was passed to them and initiate any of the steps that AIC told them that they should initiate. Go back and read your reports, comprehend them. It's real simple, you're wasting your time and our time, because when you suspend, if you suspend them, who steps in in the meantime? What are we gonna do when everything crashes? Do you care? Because it doesn't seem like you do. Seems like you grandstanding, you say, we want cohesiveness. All of your actions speak to the vision more than actually.
You may begin.
Again, they keep talking about where the money gonna come from. Jeffrey Burns, twenty-five year residence. So, um, I got more of a statement. So I'm basically answering a lot of the garbage I already heard, okay? For one, if they was concerned about what something was being paid, they would've had a concern about what AIC was getting paid, since we don't have no budget. Two, since we got so many free resources, why haven't the mayor went after the free resources to recover our money? Three, we got almost two hundred thousand dollars that is unaccounted for or can be recovered, but again, as you say, you're talking about a hundred and fifty dollars, opposed to ten thousand, seventy-eight thousand that our mayor trying to give away, and another seventy-eight thousand, he haven't went after yet. Audit's haven't been done in four years, but we're not hearing about that. We keep hearing about some little ticky tack, uh, judiciary, they're trying to give you their definitions of what, uh, your, uh, the office that you hold. Again, if they were so concerned about what the trustees are not doing, again, as the mayor always states, run for office yourself. And like he, uh, the other day, but also stated about following, um, I haven't heard Raven Johnson ask any of these questions, I haven't heard Carter bring up any of these questions, so can y'all tell me what, where's the ten thousand dollars that was stolen? Uh, what that investigation is, can y'all answer? Are you all trying to come up with seeking the seventy-eight thousand dollars that was stolen? Are you all trying to come up with anything concerning with why the mayor is trying to give away seventy-eight thousand dollars to someone that no longer works here, who was in this building this past Saturday? Because I came past, that person was in here. So also, that person is privy to information that they shouldn't be privy to. That's the conflict of interest for those who don't understand conflict of interest. If you own a business, you understand that if I'm suing you, I can't sit on the board of another company that is working for you. Thank you.
You, you, you may. You may start.
Hi, good evening, my name is Lisa. I think. My name is Lisa, I came here with Mr. Howard. I think if all of these villages, small towns, had a group of people that were not, uh, connected to them, like as you said before, then you'll have more transparency, you'll be able to move the village forward, you'll be able to bring new people in, you'll be able to create jobs, you'll be able to have activities for the children as opposed to them just running up and down the street and being afraid and not getting any education, not getting any skills that's gonna help them, and if you know you're dysfunctional, that's good, because now you can work on that. Overcoming that, that's something that you can work on, you can improve it, and you can change it. That's the first step towards making a positive change. So that's it, I'm not gonna take my entire three minutes, I don't need them, but.
Thank you. Okay, is that it? All right, um, most of these were comments, uh, there was one question about the hundred and fifty dollars, and I'm sure that's, um, just a comment also, so, uh, I just wanna say thank you for your comments, and I'm sure that it was well heard from the trustee and from the audience. Saying that, we'll move forward to comments of the trustee, trustees, I wanna start with trustee, uh, Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. No comment.
Trustee Johnson?
No comment.
Trustee Carter? Trustee Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just to address the hundred and fifty dollars, sir, uh, that's very personal to bring this up in a meeting like this. My church had an event seven months ago, and they just received their deposit back. Just so I can clear that up in your mind, I paid the deposit, I received the deposit back. So just so you're clear, my church is entitled to a deposit, but it took seven months to get it, thank you very much. And, uh, second of all, um, as. And second of all, um, as far as the copy of the O I G ordinance is already on Facebook, and we haven't even, the board hadn't even approved it, reviewed it, or whatever. But if you go to South Village, Illinois, you wanna find out how information gets out in South Village, a lot of it goes through South Village, Illinois Facebook page. Because that ordinance is already on that page. So I guess I could feel free to share John Howard's information on my page along with that ordinance. So maybe residents can see what the trustees are actually trying to do. It's for the good of the residents, this is not personal. People come up here at that podium and they make all these personal statements. This is not personal with me, I'm a 37-year resident. This is more than personal with me. So, um, so I hope I cleared up that little bit of problem with that $150. And I really do believe that we're doing the right thing. Now, it might not come out in the wash tonight, but eventually something's gonna happen. And the more we make noise, something's gonna happen. And I really do believe we need outside. I'm not gonna use the word interference, I don't know what word you wanna use, but we need fresh eyes to come in here and look and see what we're missing. Because we need it done and we need it done now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Seth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Howard, I'd like to thank you for taking your time on to come here and experience this village. We have, we have a lot to do, we have a lot of going to do. And we have a lot of residents that need more information. And for someone to think that we're being led by someone else, that's pretty ridiculous. I'm a wrong woman, and nobody tells me what to do or when to do it. I make my own decisions. I'm not including my comments.
That's it? Trustee Burns?
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I just wanna read a letter that I received. "We are writing this letter to advise you of and express our serious concerns regarding former and current officials within several departments within the village's governmental offices. The following information is a brief synopsis of our concerns. The South Village Board of Trustees in January 2023 terminated the H R consultant, Ms. Sonia Douglas, and former financial director of the finance department, Ms. Vivian Jones, for non-transparency of financial records. The mayor then replaced Dr. Jones with her friend, whom she brought in with her from her past job. The friend being senior accountant, Ms. Renee Lewis. Ms. Lewis, who at the time of her appointment was under investigation for the loss of $10,000, claimed she took the money to the bank for a deposit. Ms. Lewis could not provide any deposit slips. Ms. Lewis was since claimed that the, um, that she returned the money to the village and placed the money back in the safe, where thereafter it went missing. Ms. Lewis was given a promotion and a raise by Mayor Burgess while the investigation was still pending without board approval. To this date, the $10,000 has not been accounted for. It should also be noted that Ms. Lewis, Jr., her office has not provided the board with missing, uh, recent bank reconciliations and that the village has not had a budget since her appointment, and there have been no audits done for the past three years now going on forth. Despite the concerns expressed to the mayor by the board, he has kept her in the position and gave her a $20,000 raise to interim financial director without the approval of the board. Former H R consultant Sonia Douglas and Ms. Vivian Jones are both on the board of a company named 4D Life. This company is owned by Alfred Brown, husband to Sonia Douglas. They're friends slash relative and board, they're friends slash relative and board member. Ms. Stephen Mack, Mr. Stephen Mack, is the owner of A I C Technologies, an I T firm hired by the mayor in 2024. A I C replaced the I T firm immediately fired by the mayor for reasons unknown to the board after about three years of quality service and a cost of approximately... So this is a letter that I received from concerned residents of this village. So there are residents that are paying very close attention to what's going on in this village. And they wanted me as their trustee to read this to the public. They're very concerned about their tax-paying dollars, how it's being used, how it's being spent. And I, as their trustee, wanted to make sure that for their sake, I publicly read their correspondence. That concludes mine.
Trustee Burns? Could I have that letter for the record, please?
Yes, I'll make you a copy, thank you.
Okay, um, did you have to go to another meeting? But first of all, I just wanted to, I'm not gonna comment on this back and forth, because that's all this is. For someone to come in and say that I'm trying to work with the mayor and all this, we're trying so much to move this village forward. But you're doing it today because you have people here that you brought in to try to come in and work in the village now, everything is always someone else's fault. But what I do wanna say is, I'm hoping that people can see through this. And also, as I said before, until we have a common ground, until we come and quit pointing the fingers, saying, "I'm gonna run this, I'm doing this, I'm doing that," and not understand the position that you were elected for, we're gonna have problems. You're gonna always have problems. You cannot lead unless you know how to follow. And, but if you want to point fingers at someone else and say what someone else is not doing, that's probably a problem right there. So only thing I'm, what I'm saying right now is, until we rectify that and the gentleman asks, "What is it that needs to be done?" Until we rectify that and work as a cohesiveness. And the common denominator be the village, and not what you want or what you think you want, or you wanna raise salaries, you wanna raise this, you wanna bring that in, fine. Give me a reason. But just because you feel something is wrong, or you think something is wrong, but you don't know, because you make it upon yourself, and then you wanna run the meetings? I don't understand that. But I will say this. Call people out, people's names and everything shows the respect that you don't have. And I don't know how many people were here the last time. I, I, I said I wasn't gonna say this, but I can't help it. I can't help it. The last time that you had a black man. Everyone that was in here at that time knows what happened. We'd be here at four o'clock in the morning, I had to go work next morning. Matter of fact, I went from home, from here to work. Because we'd be here because they had lines out the door. They forced that man out, went to his job and threatened his job. That's a shame. Well, I'm not working. I'm retired. But it's a shame that we can need to. I've been to a meeting today that, that, that we're gonna be talking about pretty soon, uh, tomorrow, that I'll be talking about as far as your taxes are concerned. That's what we should be worried about, but no, we wanna worry about it because we can't get our way. We can't get this, we can't do this, point fingers, calling out people personally, talking about and disrespecting people. But we're gonna move forward. Who in the world would wanna come in here and do business in this village the way it is, that people take over, don't wanna listen to each other, yell and scream? And then they'll come. If you try to break for them, then I'm gonna keep on talking because I can. The only thing I'm saying is, until we can look at and see and respect the people that are in charge, we're not gonna go anywhere, sir. We're not, we're not going anywhere. Because everybody wants to do what they wanna do, period, and not respect the chain of command. They may say, "Oh, he ain't nothing." Okay, fine. But guess what? It's not just me, people that wanna do business, seems like maybe that's what you want. You want nothing to happen until you feel, "Well, I'm gonna bring it in." So we wanna stop everything until I come in. "Oh, we gonna bring this in because we, we're trying to bring in commerce." We had a time to bring commerce in here years ago, and it was voted down. So only thing I can say is, I hope, unless, unless there's a transformation and someone decides to say, "Okay, let's, let's, let's work cohesiveness together" and the, as a board, and not just go out there and try to do, or try to circumvent what's going on in the village. Your move by trustee Johnson, and second by trustee Carter. Trustee Williams, could you call them out?
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Seth?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Motion carrying, in about three minutes, we'll start with the special board meeting. And that's it. Three minutes, y'all. Not no five minutes, three minutes.
I'm sorry. What's wrong? I'm sorry, my gears are working. Mr. Turner? I'm sorry, my gears are working. There wouldn't have to be, we were able to have my hands made apart. Yes. Okay, so you're, yes. And the lady in the audience is, you're very much happy. Your mannerisms are exactly the same. It's kinda freaky. It's kinda freaky. It's kinda freaky. I mean, seriously.
I wanted water, but there was no water. You know, I drink, I drink more water.
You can manage your alcohol.
I can manage my alcohol.
Joseph, you my new hero. Let me see, when I can work, I wanna feel like it, it's not feeling.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of United States of America, and to be common, for which is changed, my nation, our God, and his people, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Burns?
Here.
Trustee Carter?
Here.
Trustee Coleman?
Here.
Trustee Johnson?
Here.
Trustee Seth?
Here.
Trustee Williams, here.
Okay, public comment, all questions and comments shall be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on agenda items only. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes. And may not engage in debate, commentary, replies, or remarks. I'll answer all questions and one or two public comments as the group.
Excuse me, Mayor Burgess. I'm going to motion to have public comments removed from this segment. Um, Mr. Attorney Stark, Sturt, uh, did mention that we did in this, uh, segment already have public comments, so we don't have to revisit that again. So I'm going to motion. So can you explain the way that you explained it?
Well, I, that was a side conversation that we were having. But for purposes of say, we still have to have all the comments for the, for this, for the board meeting. So I have to have a, a, a.
Oh.
My, what I was suggesting was for that side, it didn't mean the whole. My, what I was suggesting was for that side, the whole, because it's a special meeting, special committee, that he would discuss putting it in writing and acting, changing the executive ordinance, where we limit the comments, especially since it's so much overlap. But that would be a proposed separate thing to look at.
Attorney Sturt.
I apologize if you misunderstood.
Attorney Sturt, as the clerk lieutenant, are you saying that if we have back-to-back committee and board meetings, that public comment is not really necessarily at the end of the committee meeting, because you're beginning the board meeting with public comment? And the, and the comments will be basically the same? Is that basically what you're saying?
That is, yes.
Okay, that, I need, I'll, I'll inform the clerk, so we know in the future. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
And that is short and easy.
Yes, substantial.
So, so again, attorney, you're saying that, because we just got...
For now, for now, you have, you have to, like, all the meetings that require that you select them.
Okay.
For this, for this board meeting.
Even though it's a special board meeting, just like the committee? And you said we didn't have to do it then, but we have to do it now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, let me start time. You may begin.
David Fields. I understand the trustees frustration sometimes. It's hard to do nothing, you know? But it takes a lot to do, get things done. We come in here and we listen to the bickering backwards and forth, the disrespect that's being shown. That's not going to accomplish anything. We don't have anything here in the village unless just put the truth where it's at, because it gets voted down. I remember when you had the guy come here to do the survey for the grocery store. I understand trustee Williams wasn't here, but it got voted down by the other three trustees for a grocery store. Yet, the residents, some people I talked to here, they, well, the mayor stops everything from coming in. I had to explain to him, no, the mayor does not have a vote. He only has a, a, a tie-breaking vote. I said, everything that does not come here is did by your trustees. When your trustees vote stuff down, that's the reason why we don't have any here. He said, what? I said, yeah, that's the reason why we don't have any of his, because your trustees, not our mayor. Our mayor trying to bring these things here.
This is probably, I'm, I'm just...
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Miss Ben. But, but, I'm sorry, Miss Ben. But, but...
One minute.
I think that if the trustees really put forth an effort and stop thinking about themselves and think about us as the residents here in this village, I think it'd be a whole lot better. Because the money that they're talking about spending is taxpayers' money. Taxpayers' money. And they spend it like it's theirs. All these things, these financial things that's coming up and can on, they coming up, and they don't mind, because it's not coming out of their pocket. I think, I don't know how many of them up there is ta- taxpayers. But remember this here, be careful what you ask for. Because remember, when it comes, you act...
Time.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor.
You may begin.
Of course, my name is Francine Anderson, and of course, I do have a statement to make. This meeting is for you all to vote on your office of inspector general, OIG, whatever you're gonna call it. I guess that's what's on the agenda, because of course, we didn't get copies as citizens. So, two things I want to make clear. One, I think it's being repetitive. So unless you plan on firing everyone and dealing with all of the unions that we have, then of course, you do that. Because that would be fine, I like to see that. The second thing is that I would like to be clear about, from my opinion, is that your so-called called meetings, they start at 6:00 PM and they never end until after 8:00. There is nothing on your called agenda meetings, except the three or the four of you guys decide, I do believe all four of you all decide, that you gonna have a meeting and you set it on Monday. And you set it on Monday at 5:45, 6 o'clock. So you know that the citizens have a public schedule that was publicized in the beginning of the year, that you okayed that the meetings would be on Tuesdays at 7:00 PM. So I think you do that intentionally, so you don't have citizens in the audience.
Time.
I meant it didn't go that fast, I know it didn't, but I'll... Next time I come on time. We need a fundamental.
You may begin.
David Smith, resident, again, regarding the office of OIG. The village attorney has already said, you all don't have the authority to appoint that position. Why you want to disregard his expert legal advice, I just don't understand. And I hope it ends up in court and you end up proving wrong. Because again, you're overstepping your authority. You guys, thank you also for paying attention. You guys are supposed to vote out the money and approve regular ordinances, not create positions and do all of this extra stuff that you're doing. It doesn't make any sense. If you were really watching the money, stop hiring frivolous people. You wanted the internal auditor to come in and get write access. Auditors don't write, they read and analyze. It's real simple. Thank you for your courtesy, by the way, too. Very appreciated. Everything that you guys do is backwards. And again, Kwame Raoul, the state police, anybody in any one of these offices, believe me, they respond because I've spoken to some of them. And some of you all may want to be a little bit nervous behind that, because you're so out in the open, that it's just a matter of time before everything that you're doing catches up with you. And you can believe that. Because when I call, they call back. They might not answer, but they do respond. And it doesn't cost the village a thing. And believe me, some of you all, they're already watching. We don't need this gentleman here. We need some proper trustees that know how to take care of business, that can read and comprehend, that know how to spell, and have the common decency to not talk out of turn when people are talking.
Time. You may begin.
Jeffrey Burns, resident 25 years. The reason why I'm always state resident 25 years, that's how long I've been here watching this government, I've been coming to this village hall, I've watched these same people as trustees take office. I watched our mayor even when he was a trustee. The very same thing that our trustees are fighting for right now, I watched Mayor Burgess fight for the same thing when he was a trustee. I voted for you, for mayor, because of how you fought the previous mayor. That's why you got voted in. Now, in terms of people to my right want to talk about respect, you give it to or get some, but you're the only ones being disrespectful in here anyway. You're the only one interrupting trustees when they talking. It's inside, that's why I record, because I can show you yourselves. And for those that don't even live here, or state that they live here, don't even pay attention to what they saying, because you see what side of the room they sitting on. So you know that's already garbage. So, you ain't gonna get no respect if you don't give respect. And if you want to know the office of a trustee, then run for trustee, run! That's why we voted for him. And then he got in there and changed and flipped. Now he not showing or being transparent. So, yeah, you, you, I'm being watched too. I talk to people, call people too. You being watched as well, that's how I know who don't live in here, who do live in here. Thank you.
You may begin.
Three minutes?
Three minutes.
Okay, so, I, um, here, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't nebulous when I said, if you have a bona fide DHS EM here in Sawt Village with the OIG, OIG office, it generates, it'll be able to generate revenue through the, one of the many departments. We train police officers, we can train them in different municipalities here, to bring revenue here. Having the DHS office here, you would be actually qualified to receive money from the county, the millions of dollars that have gone to the other municipalities that everyone's talking about. Now, I'm listening very carefully, that's needed, I'm, I'm not coming up here using, falling on my emotions, I'm speaking as a professional. That money can come here. The reason those other communities are receiving those monies, that revenue, is because they have a successful DHS EM active in their municipality. They have OIGs in different municipalities, because it works. No one asked, or maybe I shouldn't say anything about that, if both of those were being paid and how. No one knows that, but I hear there is an assumption that it's going to be $400 an hour or something like that. Not, I don't, I don't understand that. But, I'm not speaking under emotion, I'm speaking professionally. This community can receive, and I want to be clear, through grants, millions of dollars that is already there, ready for the community. I'm just trying to be non-nebulous as possible. I don't think everyone understands. That, I do remember talking about Cook County sending millions of dollars to south suburban municipalities that have a DHS. So, if anyone is unsure, feel free, I'm still here, I'll be here, even after this meeting ends, ask me a question, and I may be able to answer your question. Thank you.
You may begin.
Larry Satt. You know, it sounds like we're talking on deafly, it's been explained, it's been explained that this service could also be free. We're always looking for free, this is where free is regarded as. People that don't want to, see, they don't look. People that don't want to listen, they don't hear. The truth is there, we need to find out where our finances are, and that should be our focus, not on all the little bickering back and forth. The mayor talked about the last black mayor and how he was driven out, and I just looked at a video where he was one of the main characters running them out. Jesus. But I voted for him too. I did. And the bickering still, no disrespect to him to you. Like you said, this is a, this is absurd, but it still seem to be squared off on the inside. So, people don't want to work with you, they're not going to listen to you, they're not going to hear you, they're not going to see what you're trying to do, you just have to keep doing it and let the truth come out. We need that investigation, we need to know, if nobody has nothing to hide, then let the truth prove that. Let us be proven wrong. Let us be proven wrong. A person got up here and spoke about you guys voting down a store. You never voted on a store, period. You voted on a survey, a five-year survey. And the reason it was voted down, because there was already a survey on the books that we had paid for from a couple of years ago, so why spend that money again? And then crying about taxpayer money. When people live a life, that's their truth. You have to let them live it and let them get their pain. Thank you for your amen, man. And she's salty because you guys didn't pick her, good night.
I'm not salty, I'm just, I'm salty, and don't read it, don't know. All you guys did, read, read, it's fundamental. Read with understanding, that's all you guys did.
Good evening, Mayor, Steve Maroc, again.
You may start.
Many of you don't know, I've been out here since 1970. I grew up here. I played basketball with David Hanks. Restart my time, please.
In the audience, please.
I won't be interrupted.
I'm not restarting time, you're still on your time, sir.
I did both sides, I said both.
He's running, his clock is running out.
So I made a quick phone call to my good friend,
One minute.
ex-police chief Robert Collins from the village of Dalton, and he verifies he worked with Mr. Howard here. He says he's a stand-up guy, and he worked with him when he had a part-time emergency management agency position with the village of Dalton. See, I know people too. When you grow up in an area since 1970, you know a lot of people. Now, I, I, I still question why you haven't used the free resources of the Cook County Sheriff's Department or the Illinois State Police to, to initiate your investigation there you want. You can always do that. And it's free.
Wow, that would say...
It is free to initiate, it is, it is free, it's there, don't ask because...
All right, moving forward, um, all of the, um, comments will be, all these comments will be based on comments. The first ordinance that I, that's on this, on this agenda, we're not going to vote on, that was something that was discussed at the... That goes, okay, that goes both sides, okay? So I'm just saying, if you want me to, I, I have no problem with it, but it's going to go both ways. Thank you. Yes, yes you do, because you guys go back and talk to us, don't say that. See, there we go. That's what I'm talking about. Okay, well, you been knowing, no, you don't, don't move me. The motion for the expect, I can expect the general, as was stated by our lawyer, we're not going to entertain that.
I appeal the mayor's decision not to vote on the motion of eternal expectation. I appeal that decision. I motion to appeal, I motion to appeal the decision. I motion to appeal the mayor's decision.
Your lawyer already told you that it was wrong.
I motion, the attorney Stark gave us his opinion, so I motion to appeal the mayor's decision not to allow us to continue with our agenda items. I appeal the mayor's decision, and we have a second. Clerk, can you please take the vote?
It's not, you can appeal if you want to, but it's not going to be a vote made.
I appeal the mayor's decision, attorney. Attorney, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Now, he can veto, the mayor herself, the power to veto. But tonight, I appeal that, I appeal that decision. I appeal that decision. The mayor can veto, uh, my, uh, clerk.
The next item on the agenda.
Attorney, we have a motion. We have a motion and a second. The mayor can veto it.
After you decided, after you can't recognize them enough, we're taking your advantage and kind of the lips, they have tried to appeal it.
Now, when they appealed it, is that a motion to accept this position? Or is that just an appeal?
No, they're not, that they can put forward unless they appeal that and there's a, they're asking to vote on the appeal.
A vote on the appeal and then a vote on the ordinance? So, we're voting on the appeal first, correct, sir?
Correct.
But now, would there be a vote on the ordinance also at that time? I mean.
Then after assuming that,
Well, you know that's what they're trying to do.
Assuming that that motion, that motion for the appeal carries, then they can vote for the motion for the ordinance.
Okay, just for the record, uh, I guess we're gonna do what we did before, so I guess we will be in court, because I'm not allowing, for the record, anyone to come in here and, and, and do this office, because we, it hasn't been appointed by myself.
And that is, and that is our advice.
So, I'm just letting you know that, that's.
But procedurally speaking, that is the proper, that is.
I didn't ask anyone in the back to say, but I, I didn't ask you guys in the back. Thank you so much, but you don't say nothing. Yes, okay.
Um, but again, this ordinance and creating this position, if this isn't appropriated.
That's what I tried to, that's what I'm saying. So, I'm just letting you know, they can, whatever you wanna establish at this particular point in time, I'm going on the record saying that we're gonna have to do what they, what you did to me before and go to court.
And our part, actually, my advice is to table the ordinance.
I was trying to do that.
This will be having a.
That's what I was trying to do. That's what I said, I was wanting to table it, as I said in the last meeting, until we had, you guys had a chance to go over it and bring it back to the board. Obviously, that's not what they wanna do, so. That's what I'm, that's the reason why I was asking to not entertain this particular motion.
So, the motion was made by trustee Burns in second.
It was an appeal.
The motion to appeal, the motion to appeal is made by trustee Burns in second.
By trustee Satt.
Yes.
Now, I'm to call the roll, correct? Okay, trustee Burns.
Yes.
Trust, this is on the appeal. Trustee Carter?
No.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Satt?
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes.
I knew that was gonna be, okay. So, uh, Mr. Sturt, what's the next item as far as, because I'm, I'm just telling you that I don't know what they're trying to do or say or whatever, but this position was not brought to, for me to appoint. So, I'm just saying that if they feel that they wanna have this person to start, whatever case they be, unless the judge tells me, I'm not, I'm not doing this.
So, there's a motion.
There's a motion to, I motion to approve the office of inspector general.
And second.
You ask me, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not even.
Attorney, time for a roll call.
Involved in that, because.
I'm just following.
It seems like you guys wanna run things.
Okay, so the roll call is.
Oh, roll call, yes, okay.
Yes.
And Carter? Trustee Carter? Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Satt?
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes.
Even though you know, and the law, even though the, sitting in court, you're right. You're absolutely right, trustee. You will sit in court. Yes, you will, like you did. But I'm just making for the, for the question as far as, for them to, to bring this, and this is for the record. We have no budget for this. You brought one person in to, to do this, that's gonna do all three items that are on there for the attorney general, inspector general, or whatever?
No.
That's what I'm going to, uh, because the, the, that's why I asked to have the ordinance looked at, so it could be redone, because with the way you have it, the inspector general is going to do all three items.
No.
So, you can say no, you want, but that's what you voted on.
The ordinance, the ordinance.
I did call the roll.
Okay, then, that's it. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Motion to approve and ordinance amending the municipal code of the village of South Village concerning vendor payments.
I motion to approve the vendor payments ordinance.
Again, this ordinance was not drafted by my office.
That's what I'm talking about.
It was drafted by a legislative council, which is outside the purview of their duties and responsibilities.
Without, uh, without due respect, the, an attorney of this village drafted the ordinance and the, um, the attorney of the village.
No, you got the attorney.
One of the attorneys, one of the attorneys of the village drafted the ordinance. That has been drafting ordinances for forty years. And so, again, I motion to approve the ordinance amended the municipal code of the village of South Village concerning the vendor payments. There's a second on the floor. Madam, uh, clerk, per team, can you take the vote, please?
Trustee Carter? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. You waiting for the lawyer?
Yes, to answer what he, what, uh.
He, he's waiting to see if I can take the roll call after there's been a motion in a second.
No.
Yes, right? Thank you. Trustee Carter?
Uh, I seem really good, bro. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Satt?
Yes.
Trustee Williams, yes. Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Okay. um, Mr. Sturt, the last item on here, they want to suspend AIC. Do they have that? I don't, I would see where the board has the authority to do that.
Not only does the board not have the authority to do that, the term suspend AIC, there's nothing in the contract between AIC and the village where that's a term that they're allowed to, or allowed to suspend them pending an investigation. It's going to create, uh, it, it's gonna create several liabilities for the village.
They don't care.
Going to sprout, so my advice would be to continue investigating it because that is, uh, it's what you so desire, but, uh, this isn't the proper avenue to address the contract with the AIC. My advice would be to table this motion, um, until we were educated about it. But, and again, that's my, that's just my.
And also, now that we finally got. My, my boy here?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Excuse, excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
You can leave.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not saying you can do it, Mr. Mayor.
No, 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 no.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
No, I, no, but that's okay, but you can say what you wanna say.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Excuse me, excuse me.
First of all, um, so, these trustees can understand, I'm not gonna suspend AIC at this point. They can vote if they want to, I'm not gonna put this village in jeopardy. We have, we have problems now with the IT. We have problems with bringing up different things in the, in the front office, that's IT. So, you wanna stop everything because of what? Because you feel something is wrong? Bring it to me, let me know what's going on. Let me know what it is that you're looking for. But to arbitrarily get together after the meetings and between the meetings and not, not when you're here, and come up with, uh, come up with this conclusion? No, I'm not for that. He will be here tomorrow until I can see, at least show me what it is you're looking for and what is the investigation entitled.
You guys, you guys had major problems.
Yes, we have.
Weeks ago.
Weeks, this was last, just last week.
Scoop.
It's a huge, huge absolute disaster for the village.
They don't care about that.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Trustee?
Okay, thank you. Uh, the investigation has been concluded. We've shared the investigation this evening. We have two ex consultants that is suing this village that is in a direct conflict of interest. We have the AIC. Uh, this was not disclosed to the board when we voted. AIC does have a clause in their contract that we are able to end the contract. So, we do want to suspend AIC with a thirty-day termination, and we do have, uh, we did do an RFP in the month of May, and the trustees will bring those, um, the RFP candidates back to the table as ASAP and to receive their contracts. And we do have a, a IT department that is on standby and ready to proceed. Now, if the mayor chooses to ignore his duty as the mayor of this village, because, again, AIC does have a clause in this contract saying that we can do what we're doing. And we're, and, and we're following the contract of AIC. So, if the mayor chooses not to bring in an IT company that is very familiar with the processes of this village, in addition to, if there, while there are so many problems in our IT department, when these people have been here since April of 2024, they made a statement that they can do all of this in their sleep. You was in here in 2022, you made a deep dive assessment of our system. You were hitting, you, you, you got voted in without, uh, without revealing that you were connected with two former consultants that's suing the village. You are associated with those former consultants. You've been here since April of 2024. So, why are we still having problems with our IT? When we were told that they can do this in their sleep? We've also asked for a phase from I, AIC, and they have not given it. Because if these, if this project has to be done, it has to be done in phases, per department police, uh, fire, administrator, so on and so forth. We asked them to give us a phase, and they still have not done it. When you're going to start, what it will entail, and when it's going to end. AIC still has not given us that report. So, if the mayor chooses not to bring a reputable company into this village to continue the IT services that they are extremely familiar with, then that is on the mayor. But, it would be irresponsible as trustees to continue to allow these, these people with their hidden agendas, these people that are not on our payroll, that's still asking us and putting themselves, the mayor's putting them on our payroll every week, to pay them $80,000, and they are not employees, consultants, or have contracts with this village per the, a legal counsel and also per the corporate counsel. Everyone knows it. That person has no jurisdiction here, and that person is running around in our village with the IT company that they're also affiliated with. It is unacceptable. And it will be unacceptable for us as trustees to continue this nonsense. Now, the corporate attorney can speak with the mayor and advise the mayor to put in an IT person so that we can continue our business. But the corporate attorney needs to advise the mayor that, because tonight, we're suspending AIC with a thirty-day termination. So, that is what the corporate attorneys are here for, so advise the mayor to bring in the IT department, or another IT representative, because this IT representative is not good for our village, and we, it's no transparency there. And they're running around, or they're palling around with a ex-employee that has no jurisdiction here. And we, as trustees, would be irresponsible if we don't handle this. Now, speak to the mayor, and I'm sure the mayor and counsel will handle this.
Okay, then, uh.
So, I motion to suspend AIC because of the investigation and what we have found to be in, in grave, they misrepresented themselves, misrepresented their position. They still have not done the work that they were hired to do since April of 2024. We're still having problems. They still have not submitted a phase program. So, this company, without transparency, cannot remain in this village, with all due respect. And the mayor and corporate attorney will have a discussion on making sure that the mayor bring in a, a IT person that can continue our business. That's on the record. So, my, I motion to suspend AIC immediately, with also with a thirty-day termination.
I'm gonna get sued again.
Nope.
Oh, no?
You already commented.
No, I did not, but that's okay.
No, I'm not gonna ask you to comment.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to comment.
Uh, you didn't know that, but that's.
No, well, the vote will tell me. All right.
After you take a roll call, Mr. Mayor, you're supposed to ask for comment. Why do you feel it's not necessary?
Why do you feel to tell me what I need to do?
Because it's your job.
It's your job to do what I ask.
When there's a motion in a second, you ask for comment.
The vote will tell me to comment. The vote will tell me to comment, so I don't need comment. Y'all made, y'all have already talked about this.
I don't need to vote until I make a comment.
No, bro, then, then just sit here. Because you've already made, you put this on the agenda, so I know you.
I did not put this on.
Okay, I'm sorry, you're right.
Mr. Mayor, you make a lot of assumptions. You know what's stated by assumptions, right?
Okay, but are you going to call the roll?
Okay.
Are you gonna call the roll?
So, my comment.
Are you going to call the roll?
No, I'm gonna make a comment.
I'm gonna, are you gonna call the roll?
That's my right to make a comment.
No, no, I'm asking you, no, I said no.
Mr. Attorney, when there is a motion and a second on the floor, are you not supposed to ask for comment?
No, why you gonna listen to him now? You listened to him a few minutes ago. But you didn't listen to him a few minutes, he told you that you can't do this. He told you that you shouldn't do.
He talked about this so much.
Thank you.
And you can see why there could be any, any reasonable need to have any more comments on it. However, yes, you're right, you can make a public comment. I don't know why, we need to have it.
Thank you, Attorney Sturt. The public comment I would like to make is the reason why there is so much mistrust in this particular situation is that this particular company came in and got paid without board approval. This particular company had their contract assigned by the mayor, signed by the mayor before being reviewed by either the board or the attorneys. This particular company has been noticed that there's been improprieties and maybe possible collusion, and everything else is happening with this particular company. And now you wanna trust them with our IT department? Yes, they got paid without coming to the board first. They got a contract signed without coming to the board first. They got a contract signed before going to the attorneys first. And then when the village attorneys was finally asked to review the contract, they showed it to the trustees, and we have yet to receive the contract from AIC approving those changes from the village attorney. So, we are working solely on what the mayor wants us to do and not what the law tells us to do. As a trustee, I think that's irresponsible. When are we gonna start following the law? You want us to follow the law? You want us to follow the mayor? The mayor is paying people without board approval. The mayor is signing contracts without board approval, and yes, it's a fact. And it's been stated at previous meetings before. That is my comment. So, yes, I vote yes to suspend AIC, and let the chips fall where they land.
But you didn't call the roll. How you gonna vote yes to it? You gotta call the roll first.
You just asked me.
Well, no, you have to call the roll.
Did you, did you? Oh, shit.
No, there is no, there, but you better comment.
The motion.
I said call the roll.
Okay, all right, okay, call the roll. Okay, Burns.
Yes.
Uh, Satt?
Yes.
Williams, yes. Carter, oh, thank you, Carter. Uh, Johnson?
No.
And Coleman?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Removed by trustee, um, Dan, second by trustee Carter. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night. Good night.
As Harden, as Marko, as Dalton, as soon as Blackstone get a little bit of power. They know how to fuck it up real bad. She been in here all day.
No.
Yes.
No.
The public meeting is over.
Ain't happening. Go home.
Go home.
The public building. Public building.
Go home, Debbie, get it off your chest. Don't be no damn friend. That bitch has been a problem since she been here.